Yep. All right. If everybody take a seat so we can get this underway, we greatly appreciate it. Thanks for coming out. So, you could do roll call, please.
Councilmember Schroeder, here. Councilmember Fessy Kelly, here. Councilmember Jablonski, here. Vice Mayor Bright Cruz, here. Mayor McKay, here.
Could we please stand for the pledge? And, let's see, Bob, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and universal.
Thank you for the honor, Mayor. It's a pleasure.
State Representative Richard Stark, would you please come up and join us?
Awesome. Listen, I want you to do something because we get to see and talk to you all the time, so you can turn that dice around and face the camera and talk to the audience. So, it's perfectly all right.
Well, as long as you don't mind me having, you know...
Nope, go right ahead.
You actually turn this thing around?
Yep, it'll spin. It'll spin.
Hey, listen, I'm very nervous about any kind of technology here.
There you go. Awesome.
All right, so...
We're good.
Well, I was going to say to the commissioners that I have the privilege and the honor of being your state representative, but I'll say that to the entire crowd. But thank you all for coming tonight, and it is my honor to be your state representative and to represent you in Tallahassee. And I do want to tell you that you do have a wonderful town council, and they really are a tremendous group of people to work with, and they do come to see me and visit in Tallahassee so we can go over the issues that affect Southwest Ranches. Before I begin, somebody had, when I was at the last meeting here, had asked me about the cellular telephone... Ah, okay. Would you like a little information on that? All right. Before I... This is... I have not really discussed this particular piece of legislation with any of the other cities at this point in time or towns. But, you know, we probably deliberated close to 300 bills this session, and it wasn't one of our busier sessions. But we had one particular piece of legislation that had to do with what's called 5G technology. And 5G technology is the next thing that's coming for your cellular phones, iPads, whatever. And instead of having to put up a new cellular tower for this, what they're going to actually be doing is putting an attachment onto existing city poles, anything that they can find freestanding. And we... There was an issue between cities, towns, and companies like AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, anybody that, you know, that does, you know, has cellular technology. And part of the problem is with how it's, you know, how it's going to look. I mean, I don't think we would like to put on the pole out there, something that looks like a washing machine. And so, that was worked out. But one of the other issues was how much the city is going to charge one of these carriers for putting, you know, having that presence there. I mean, you can't do it for free. And I was one of only three people that voted against the bill at its final stop, which was the House floor. And the cities and counties were against it, and I made a pledge to then the mayor of the city of Weston, when I was first running, that I would preserve home rule for the cities and the towns. And it's always something that we're constantly working on in Tallahassee. We have laws being proposed every single year to try to strip away the power of local government. And so, I stayed with it, but I am telling you that the bill passed. Whether it'll be modified, I mean, we really worked it very hard, but in the end, it was $150 per location for one of these devices, and most of the cities and counties said, "It's really not enough money." And each municipality had a different idea of what they wanted to do, so I sided with the cities and the towns and voted against it. And I don't know, if you need more information, I'd be happy to get it for you. Among the most important things that we do are take a look at various projects for the different cities and towns. And Southwest Ranches had a number of projects. Unfortunately, we were only able to get one passed, and that has to do... It was a $340,000 appropriation. It was a water project to alleviate flooding in certain areas in Southwest Ranches. Now, I did present a bill on at least one guardrail project, another drainage project, the emergency operations center, but the governor vetoed a lot of these projects, and they never... We were never able to get them past the, you know, the state, you know, the House floor. So, we'll try again on some of these things next year, but we were happy to get the, you know, the flooding project through. And I made the last presentation of that in the appropriations bill before it was, you know, voted on in the budget by the entire House, and that one was approved by the governor. Anyway, let me give you some of the... These are some of the highlights, and I may have to do like a lightning round because we had so many different things going on. But of the high-profile bills, two of them were education bills. There's a bill, the bill number... And by the way, some bills, when they go through the House of Representatives, are approved by the entire legislation under the name "House Bill Number Whatever It Is." Sometimes they reverse it, and they're approved under the Senate version. In this case, it was House Bill 7069, which is a bill for education for kindergarten through 12th grade. And there've been a lot... There has been a lot of... There have been a number of editorials on this bill in the newspaper, but let me just give you the highlights. There was a $200 million part of the budget for this for teacher bonuses. We have something called the best and brightest, and based on certain criteria, teachers can get a bonus from their current salary. This year, principals were added to that. Now, there's been a little bit of controversy over how the best and brightest works because one of the criteria is based on what your SAT scores were before you became a college student. So, we've actually had some teachers say, "Well, why am I going to get a bonus now if I've been a teacher for 40 years?" So, that's something that we continue to work on in the state legislature, but I'm just going to tell you that that is one of the criteria. Also, the state has created something new called a School of Hope, and what this is is to attract private charter management companies to come into areas where we've had constantly failing schools for several years. Now, this was not something that I was particularly in favor of, I'm just letting you know that, but this was passed by the legislature. Like I said, it's a $140 million project. We don't know if anybody is going to... In other words, if we can be able to get a company to come in and do this, but it is nobody else in the country is doing this. This is a first. And so, maybe we'll revisit this next year and see if this had any success, but this is part of this bill. Also, there was $30 million granted as part of this bill for special needs students throughout the state. That's a good thing to always be giving more education dollars for students with special needs. It's a, you know, something that we have, you know, throughout the state. Also, there... Due to parents asking this for the last few years, there's going to be, starting this year, a rollback in some of the testing that students have to do. There's been the FCATs, which are now called the Florida Sunshine Standards. There's a lot of standard... There's a lot of work that goes into this every year. I hear from teachers constantly that they're always teaching to exams, and that there's too much testing. So, for the first time this year, the Algebra II exam for end of course is going to now be eliminated. And then, every year, we're probably going to start to roll back a little bit on the testing because there's just been too much. So, this is the first year. Also, we had parents in some schools saying that they would like some of these exams to be given by paper instead of on computer. So, now, schools will have the option in kindergarten through, I think, 5th grade to use paper exams instead of using, you know, using computer. Let's see. Also, we voted, as part of this bill, mandatory kindergarten through 5th grade for 20 minutes of recess in school. Doesn't affect the charter schools, that's optional for them, but the traditional schools must offer 20 minutes of recess. And we had a lot of things last... I'm in the legislature now five years, and every year I have been there, there were complaints by teachers and parents that because there was so much teaching to the exams, that they didn't have enough time for recess. And I don't know about you, but in my generation, that was a big thing in elementary school to have at least, you know, we used to have at least, I think, a half an hour of recess during the day. And I think it's very, you know, everybody thinks it's very important for the well-being of students in that age group. Now, last but not least, part of this bill states that your property taxes that go to school improvements and infrastructure, it's called capital outlay money, it's based on a certain millage of your property taxes, most counties it's 1.5. And the legislature voted that that money, which was optionally shared by the school board with charter schools, now must be shared with charter schools. So, whether it's a privately-run charter school or a municipally-run charter school like Pembroke Pines, those dollars have to be shared. And again, that's... I mean, I did not vote for this bill because of this reason, but there are parts of the state where it is beneficial, you know, areas that they have a lot of charter schools. So, I don't like to be the bearer of bad news, but this is something that we were not happy with. But we're going to move on, and we're going to see how this impacts the counties. The school board of Broward County told me they would love to share all the dollars that they can with every single charter school, but the legislature vote, before I was elected, rolled back how much money counties could put on your tax bills. So, 1.5 mils is the maximum. It used to be 2 point, you know, going back 10 years ago, but the legislature rolled it back. And just about every school board will say, "You roll it back to 2 mils, there's plenty of money to go around for all the charter schools." And I do visit schools throughout the county, and I have been in schools where the air conditioning's not working correctly, there are classrooms that, you know, don't get the things that they need. Here in the western part of the county, we seem to have most of what we need in our high schools, but in certain portions of the county, they don't. And so, I'm going to keep fighting for public education, but, you know, sometimes that's just the way it is. We get outvoted here in Broward County. One of the things that I happen to have agreed with the governor on, he vetoed a bill that had to do with higher education. Part of the problem with the higher education bill, although we were giving more money to the tune of about $250 million more to the universities in the state, they were rolling back to the tune of about $30 to $40 million to community colleges. And while I was up there, the first week I was up there, we had meetings about just how great our community colleges are in this state. We are considered to have one of the premier group of community colleges of all the states in the Union. And we are working to get our state universities up there, the University of Florida and Florida State, actually, I don't know if we have Gator fans or Seminole fans here, but, you know, at one time, the University of Florida was by and far the lead school in the state of Florida. But the state has been putting more and more dollars into Florida State to get those schools to be on a par and to have those as top 50 schools nationwide, and we've really, we've gotten there. Both of those schools are top 50 schools nationwide, you know, compared to the other state universities and colleges, whether they be public or private. But, you know, veto, you know, not giving enough money to our community colleges, I understand why the governor did what he did. Now, the thing we were concerned about was that that was going to affect the Bright Futures Program, which is a scholarship program that the state has, depending on what your grade point average is. And we went back this year that if you have, I can't tell you what the GPA is, but you have a high GPA, we went back to where you could get 100% funding for your tuition. Doesn't cover, you know, dormitory or living costs, but it covers your tuition. And because the governor vetoed this bill, that means it's only going to be for this year because we budget afford. So, to get it to be permanent, we have to vote it in next year. But one of the other things that is a positive is that, I don't know if any of you have seen what the cost is of textbooks, but there are college textbooks, I mean, we've heard them going up to $500 and $600 a book, which is just outrageous. So, even though it's not tremendous amount of money for certain Bright Futures scholarships, the students will be able to get a stipend of $300 per semester to help pay for books. So, we're looking to do more and more things. I mean, one of the bills that we passed this year, the GI Bill, both in Florida and nationwide, covers tuition for veterans. But in a state like Florida, and just about every single state, there are certain fees that they have to pay. I can't tell, I mean, I couldn't even tell you what they are, but I know that students have to pay fees other than tuition and housing. So, this year, the legislature passed a bill that those fees for veterans will be paid for. And we have been working year by year to make this an increasingly veteran-friendly state. I had a bill passed two years ago that also addressed veterans. We found in research that when veterans move to the state of Florida, they often do not live here long enough so that their dependents can go to school, like their kids, they will, as it was, they had to pay out-of-state tuition because they didn't have two years of residency. So, we changed the law so that as soon as a veteran is here and establishes residency, their spouses and their children can apply to a state university, and they will pay the in-state tuition fees. It's interesting, I got a, an email today from a veteran saying that, you know, "I visit parks, and I thought that the state of Florida would do what some of the other states have, and where I would have either reduced fees or no fees to visit state parks." And I'm pretty sure that we passed something like that, so I'm going to have to get back to them, but just wanted to let you know. I mean, you know, every day, you know, I get hundreds of emails. I can't look at every single one because there are so many, but I take a scan through. And I can tell you, just if you want to write your state legislator, I mean, if you write me, chances are, I'm going to read it. But very often, when there's something that comes up, people will go to the, you know, the organization they're working with, with something that they're trying to get the legislature to add, change, whatever it is, and it's like a form letter. And when we see hundreds or thousands of form letters, I can't answer it, but I can tell you that when somebody writes an original letter, my staff always pulls that out because we know that somebody really took the time, and they really were interested in contacting their state office. So, I always answer those or make a phone call, you know, and, you know, it's with... I mean, look, I have a career aside from being a state legislator. My insurance office is the next exit south of here. So, there's only X amount of hours in the day, you know, that we have to answer all the calls and emails that we get. But I can tell you, but the state representative is the first, you know, I'm like the first lieutenant in a battalion. You know, I'm the one that, you know, takes the most pressure. We're the ones that, we're the ones that closest, you know, to the people. You know, we have smaller districts, the Senate's district is three times mine, and then you go to the U.S. House of Representatives, which is even bigger, and there in Washington, and then we only have two senators here. But a state representative represents about 160,000 people. So, I can tell you that if you really have an issue with the state, I'm really the primary office that you should be contacting. And I do have a history of, you know, making phone calls back to people that have an issue. Anyway, let's go to the next thing. This was the one that everybody loved this year, and this was medicinal cannabis or medical marijuana, however you want to call it. But on the ballot last November, Amendment Number Two, I believe, voters who voted on that particular issue, 71% voted in favor of legalization of marijuana for medical purposes. But it was up to the state legislature to come up with the rules. And in our session this year, we actually didn't get it done. We had to have a special session two weeks ago to get this done. And this is, so let me just tell you what was approved and what was not approved. These are the medical conditions that are outlined. Multiple sclerosis, glaucoma, HIV/AIDS, Parkinson's, Crohn's, and hepatitis. Now, the bill was left flexible enough that if there's enough demand for any other types of illnesses, that that can be added later. In a legislature where we pride ourselves on being proponents of a free-market economy, we did not do that with this particular bill. And this is how it's going to work. The state originally approved five, what they call growhouses or farms, to cultivate the cannabis plant. But from top to bottom, from growing the plant to doing whatever they do to it to make it into a saleable product, to the very end where the consumer gets it, is going to be owned all by the same entity. Now, by the time we finished last week, we approved 17 different farms to grow medical marijuana. And they each will be able to have five, what are called dispensaries, locations where it can be distributed. And there were some cities and municipalities and towns, I believe, that already have ordinances that forbid having a dispensary in their, you know, in their municipality, and I believe, I'm going to have to research this one, but I think that that's going to hold, even though we passed this bill last week. The ways that the product can be utilized are through pour form, in the form of oils and edibles, you can eat it, or vape it, but no smoking. This was one of the things that we had as an issue in the legislature. We had many people coming up to testify that they said, "Well, based on how we read the bill that we voted on, we believe that this could be smokeable." And the actual thing that you voted on when you went on the ballot, the only thing it said about smoking is it said that there will be no smoking in public places. So, based on that, you would surmise that smoking was included, but unfortunately, we were outvoted as far as that we tried to amend it on to the bill, and it was defeated. So, but I, in the end, I mean, I voted for this. We didn't want to have another session where we just did not get this approved. This was something that the voters clearly asked for, and so we, you know, so we got it approved. Now, I do want to do one backtracking, and that's in the special legislative session we had, there was a bill that approved another few hundred million dollars for student funding, comes out to another, approximately another hundred dollars per student, you know, in funding, which means that per student funding this year is up to just under $7,300 a student. Now, this is the highest that we've ever been in our state. That's the good. The not-so-good is that we are over $2,000 below the national average, and we're hoping to continue to work on that. The legislature did take it on the chin after the 2008 recession and had a backtrack, and now we are ahead of where we were in 2007, but we really have a little bit more room to grow in education. And if you believe in public education for students and making this a state, because when we fund education heavily, it brings in business to the state. If the state sees that this is a good state to, you know, for places for their children to go to school, you're going to have, it's better for business. And so, we're going to continue to work on that. Anyway, I'm going to do, I'm going to kind of go through this a little bit quicker now so you can get back to business. So, here's my lightning round of other things that we did. The legislature voted that next year, there will be something on the ballot, an amendment to expand the home state exemption from $50,000 to $75,000. The good is that if you're a taxpayer, you will get a break, and I like that as a taxpayer and a homeowner. The bad thing is that it's going to roll back revenue that flows to the cities and towns. So, you're going to have to think about that, and I think the city should be thinking about what, you know, what, how you want to get the word out as to how you want everybody to vote on that. Any bills that we had this year to either expand or to do our work with the Mikasuki Tribe and the Seminole Tribe over gaming, didn't happen this year, so we have to take it up again next year. After very many years, there was an increase in the salaries of state employees. They haven't had a salary increase since before I was elected. So, that happened this year. There was a $50 million appropriation made two weeks ago to help shore up Lake Okeechobee. Now, I know it may not be a big deal down here, but it's a big deal in the state where you get a hurricane that that, the dikes that protect Lake Okeechobee could break. And most of us feel that the Army Corps of Engineers is not moving fast enough, and the state decided to put $50 million in that to get the, the Army Corps of Engineers, I hate to use this term, to get off their rear ends. So, hopefully, that's going to, that'll work. If you're familiar with Stand Your Ground, with the Stand Your Ground law, the way it's worked is that if somebody wants to invoke Stand Your Ground because they're in an altercation, they have to prove to a prosecutor that they should have had a Stand Your Ground case. The state decided to expand, expand your ground by stating that prosecutors have to prove that there should not have been a invoking of Stand Your Ground. So, it's going to make it more difficult for the, for police and state prosecutors to prove that there should not have been Stand Your Ground. And my problem with Stand Your Ground is though, I understand that, you know, you expect that if somebody's in a situation where they want to defend herself, in the old days, they said, "Just get out of there unless you couldn't." And with this, you know, we've already seen cases where, how do you know, how do you know that they just didn't take out that gun and shoot first? And so, this is an issue we're going to have to deal with, but the, I can tell you that once you get north of Palm Beach County, this is something that most of the rest of the state wants, and so, we expanded it. This year also, I brought a bill again to put a ban on texting while driving, and although we do have a quote-unquote "ban" on texting while driving, police cannot pull citizens over if they see them texting. And so, I'm going to try again next year. We have, we have a few people in the leadership who absolutely don't want this, and yet I speak to police departments all the time who would like to see expansion in this. And if you watch the news, take a look, there's a new technology now. It's called the Textalizer. And with a smartphone or a, or an iPad, police can be behind the vehicle, and they can tell if you're touching your phone. Not going to happen in the state of Florida anytime soon. We have to pass a law that will allow it, but the technology is improving. One of the, Jose Oliva, who's going to be our incoming speaker in 2018, has been one of the people that hasn't allowed this, you know, the expansion of this law. And I asked him why, and he said, he said, "Well, you know, it's kind of hard for police to really tell that you're texting." He asks me all the time if I don't, I believe in freedom in my vehicle, and then the other thing, he says, "Well, there's going to be new technology out that's going to be able to prevent people from texting while they're in their car." The problem is, is unless there's a law, you can't force somebody to turn on that technology, or if it's actually built in, from disconnecting it. So, we're going to try again this year. All major gun bills failed this year. There's only one, I do want to tell you, there was one gun bill that I did support, but it never made it. People who have concealed weapons sometimes could be in a location, and maybe they move in such a manner, and the gun becomes visible. And there has been some prosecution of people for this where it really shouldn't be. We were going to call it this year the Peekaboo Law, to actually, you know, roll back fines or help people who just, you know, they, you know, the gun just became visible when they didn't want it to. That was the only one I supported, but it didn't happen. The other laws that we were doing were open carry, which means you'd be able to carry weapons, you know, like sort of they did in the Wild West, you know, where you can have them, you know, visible. There was a bill to allow guns in the courthouse, there's a bill to allow campus carry, and then there was another one that actually would have allowed firearms in terminals in the airport. And this was presented after we had the thing here in Fort Lauderdale, if you can believe it. But they all failed. There was one bill to gut the Sunshine Law, which would have made, which meant that our commissioners here who can't, you know, have a public meeting without being noticed, would have allowed at least two city commissioners or county commissioners to meet and not have to obey the Sunshine Law. That didn't pass. And last but not least, I'm going to give you an interesting perspective on something you probably don't think about. In most states, up until about 10 years ago, when a child is adopted, the birth certificate is sealed by most states. So, that meant that even, and it still means in a lot of places, that a child, once they become an adult, if they want to get a copy of their original birth certificate, because the birth certificate has to be amended to some degree, because even if you're adopted, you have to show who you are to be able to get a driver's license or to vote. So, the birth certificate is amended. Well, there's been a movement in states, we're up to about 25 states now, that allow that document to become unsealed, and as long as you're 21 or more, you can get a copy of what your original birth certificate is. But interestingly enough, it's very controversial in almost every state that it, that has been presented. And I presented it for the first time this year. We couldn't get a hearing on it, but it's got a lot of support. In fact, New York State, the... In fact, New York State, the state, the senate in New York State just approved the bill today. And when I was checking on the various states, it's interesting that California, which is the largest state in the Union, actually has, it's actually part of the state constitution that you cannot get that original birth certificate. I'd never heard of that before. Uh, so I'm gonna work on this again next year, but it does come with a little bit of controversy. Uh, but anyway, that's, that's, that's the last of my updates. I, I mean, I know I spoke a long time, uh...
Richard, no worries, buddy. I wanna give a special thank you to you for the hard fight and the, the drive to help us go, get after what we were trying to get and not giving up. So I wanna give a special thank you to you for that. You went above and beyond.
I mean, if there's any questions, I mean, I'm happy to field any, you know, any questions you might have.
Wow. No questions for a state representative? That's pretty amazing.
Oh, okay, good. We're fine.
I thought I read in the paper that, um, post-traumatic stress is one of the, um, issues.
Uh, I'm gonna tell you that you may be correct on that. You may be correct on that. Um, I mean, I, I'll tell you what, I'll research that for you, uh, because post-traumatic stress is, you know, is generally a, you know, psychological thing, and what I addressed here were all things that were physical, physically medical, so I'll, I'll follow up on that for you. All right. Uh, I'll, I'll take this lady and then that gentleman in the back. Yes, ma'am?
Is the lottery money still going toward education?
Yes. Yeah, that, there's been no change with, you know, with the lottery dollars. Uh, that's gonna continue the way it was. Uh, we've always had that, you know, play in the state, or is the state actually making sure enough dollars get there that they're supposed to? One of the things that the lottery money does pay for is the Bright Future Scholarship. That, that's part of it. So I hope that answers your question, but it, it, there were no changes from what we already had. Yes, sir?
Just as far as the cannabis ruling and everything, I know people on both sides of the aisle on that, that, you know, everyone looks to Colorado as really maybe the text case of what's gonna happen and what could happen, right? Obviously, it looks like there's a lot of money that's gonna be generated from that potential money. How much of that can come to Southwest Ranches or to our city, and how mu-, how can that help us? And that's the first part of the question.
I'm gonna give you, I, I'll give you, I'll give you a partial answer on that.
The second part of the question is, out of the seventeen farms or dispensaries and everything, how many of them, what's gonna be the closest one to our community here? And what is some of the fallout that we can expect from that?
All right, well, first of all, um, the law that we passed, uh, it, there's no recreational usage. It's strictly medical for the various things that we talked about. I'll circle back with you. I'll find out what the closest location is. Uh, because, you know, Dave Broward in Palm Beach County, which is the most populous part of the state, I mean, I know that we have, we will have growhouses and dispensaries in this area. The dispensaries, I may not be able to tell you, but I can certainly find out for you where the growhouses are, so I'll come by and I'll, I'll get you, and I'll, and I'll get your information. Yeah, I'll, I'll get you, well, you know, there was nothing in here where we really discussed the taxation of the, of this and how it's gonna flow down. That's still sort of, that's still sort of in process.
Medicine, so you might tax it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, eventually it's, I mean, it's, it's just too new. I mean, just getting the regulation in place was the most important thing. I mean, I mean, look, we're gonna have certain issues. Uh, in Colorado, one of the issues they have, first of all, marijuana is illegal on a national basis. So you can't transport from state to state. You also, 'cause I've spoken to people in Colorado, you can't write a check and then deposit it in a bank, because the bank is under federal regulation. So if they take, so everything's done pretty much when they understand in cash, and they have special type of places where they can receive it. I don't even know what we're doing with that here yet. You know, I mean, we're, we're so, you know, we're so far in the beginning of this, uh, you know, and, yeah, in fact, by the way, you just reminded me of something else, which is sort of like a, an offshoot of this. Hemp, if, if you're familiar with hemp, usually used to make rope. It's also illegal in the state of Florida. In fact, most of the country made it illegal right around the same time that marijuana was made illegal, but hemp was, I mean, George Washington grew hemp on his, his plantation. And it's one of the best products for certain types of things, like rope and, it used to be good for sales in, uh, on, on vehicles, uh, yes. Yeah, so, uh, the state approved hemp to become legal again, but what they did is they made a two-year study, and the University of Florida is gonna grow it in an experimental, they're gonna grow it experimentally to make sure that if they have the plant grown, that it doesn't, you know, 'cause you, you bring a new plant to be grown in the state, it could cause, cause disease in other plants here, so they're gonna study it for two years. So that's the sort of another thing that we're, that didn't get a lot of news. But I'm gonna come back and get your...
There's discussion on how that money's gonna flow back to the cities or anything like that.
There is discussion, but there's, but there's, I don't have a fi-, I don't have a final answer for you, that's the thing. But I'm gonna take your information, I'll get that information for you. Yeah. All right, uh, one, one, so we went from no questions to several. Very good, okay.
I just saw an article today, we're pumping by ninety-eight school buses. What do they cost and what do they take home? Why do they need to lift four thousand or a thousand pounds for the wheelchair?
Uh, I hate to say it, but you, you stumped the stars on this one. This, I did not see that article. And also, if it's Palm Beach County, that does not affect us here down here in South Florida, but if you would like to know how much it costs to buy a school bus, that takes me a phone call to get an answer for you. So, uh, I, I would be happy to, uh, everybody that had a question here that, uh, that I wasn't able to answer, I'll be happy. I'll, I'll go out and get your information, I'll get, I'll get back to you, like, within the next day or so.
All right, Richard.
Yes, sir, okay. All right.
We thank you. Awesome.
Thank you, folks.
Anytime, greatly appreciated. Come back any time, Richard, we appreciate it.
Hey, Richard, when, when do we get our money? Don't, don't leave yet.
I know, I know, we'll find, I'll get that answer.
Perfect. Andy, I'm gonna let you take over and make the next introduction.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Our, our next presentation is on Zika awareness, and Anton is here with us. He's the director of the Broward County Highway and Bridge Maintenance Division, and he's also in charge of the Mosquito Control Section, and I will tell you, he's been a very good friend of the town, so we're very happy to have him here with us tonight. Thank you, Anton.
Thank you.
Good. Russell just needs a minute to boot up the PowerPoint.
Could somebody start the clock?
He can talk about other things.
Yeah, I will say, here, I...
I don't, don't know how to dance, I can't sing, so...
Light smears, one of them. I, I just say that, uh, it's great to have you here. Uh, you all may not know, but we had that, uh, significant issue out west, uh, where we needed the guard rail out there. And, um, one of the individuals that was most helpful to us in moving that along and getting that project underway and in place so very quickly, it was incredible how fast that moved, was Anton. And he was just a, a great, as, as Andy said, a great friend to our town, really helpful. So it's, uh, I want you to know, we really appreciate that, and we remember that, and it's been great.
Thank you, thank you.
Is this why we need new computers?
Yeah. Seems like this happens every time.
Is this why we need some updated computers? That's not a good thing.
Well, can we ask questions? Like, do we have any Zika cases out here?
Sure, you can ask. Oh, but let me go ahead and introduce myself while we're doing that. My name is Anton, Division Director for Highway and Bridge Maintenance.
Let me make it easy, since we have enough plenty of people here. Let me let you do the same thing, spin around and talk to the audience and...
Okay. I'm gonna have to see the screen somehow.
Pardon?
Yeah, he's gotta see the screen.
Oh, you gotta see the screen somehow? Okay, all right.
Okay. So, um, oh, there, there we go. The, um, I'm, I usually work off the highway, I work for Highway and Bridge Maintenance, so we maintain roadways and bridges in Broward County. In my spare time, I also do mosquito control, and I'm also the point person for Broward County for, for Zika. Um, just like, very quickly, about two or three years ago, we started monitoring the Zika situation in South and Central America and start preparing ourselves, because we knew it was just a matter of time before Zika landed on our shore, and sure enough, last summer it did. Um, and I'm gonna go through the presentation real quick here, and I'll open up for questions. Now, how do I? Oh, there we go. So, so what, what is, what is the big deal? Um, let me go back. How do I move?
We'll, we'll help you.
Okay, thank you. There you go. Okay, next slide, please. So what's the big deal with Zika? Now, the fact is, most people that have Zika don't even know they have Zika, but for pregnant women, uh, the consequence can be very severe. And what I mean by that is, the chance of a pregnant woman that contracts Zika, that ba-, that baby may be born with some kind of severe birth defect greatly increases by about twenty-folks. In fact, the CDC is estimating right now that the chances of that baby being born with some kind of severe birth defect when a woman contracts Zika is about five to ten percent, which is a greatly number. Now, also, if, um, if the male partner gets it, he can pass it on to the female partner, and that baby can be born with some kind of severe birth defects as well. So that's, that's the, the major problem. Next slide, please. So, now, that you, we, we have the virus, and then we have the mosquitoes. Now, you, most folks might not know, but there's about over forty different type of species of mosquito that live in Broward County. Now, the way we treat each of these mosquitoes are slightly different. Now, the, the one that's, we have the most right now, which is the salt marsh mosquito in, in this area, is mostly the, the salt marsh mosquito. Now, those mosquitoes do not actually breed in our area, they actually get, uh, blown in with the storm that we had recently, where we had about two weeks of rainfall every day, they came in with them, and they came in by the billions. Um, and they're nasty, they bite, they bite a lot. But they, the only way to get rid of them is to kill the adult mosquito, which is very different from how we attack the Zika mosquito. Um, the way we get rid of them is just through adult aciding, adult aciding, which is to kill the adult mosquito. Now, we've been working through the weekends, um, last weekend we were here in your town spraying, um, and most folks might not know, but we actually spray very early in the morning, from about 2:00 AM to about nine or so, that's when we stop. We recently trained additional crew, and we use a different chemical to spray, um, to, during, in the town throughout this whole week as well, throughout the day. And that chemical gets, most of the time, this time, mosquitoes actually rest during the day, um, the one that get blown in from the Everglades, um, the chemical that we spray actually get them agitated and, and, and flying around, and then the second part of the chemical knock them down. And our crew have been out throughout the town within the last week or so. Now, getting back to the Zika, um, situation, that the mosquito that we're concerned about with Zika is the ADI's Jiptai mosquito. That's what's called the container breeder, and they don't live in big ponds or the Everglades, they live in very small containment water. And that's the one that we're mostly concerned about, because that's the one that pass on Zika, chikungunya, um, dengue, um, and a whole host of other diseases throughout this our area. Next one. They need very little water to breed, they can live indoors as well, um, they bite day and night, which is different from the other mosquito, and only the female bites. And the, the reason for that is because she needs that blood meal to reproduce. And by the way, the, the eggs can go from one season to the next. So what I mean by that is, she lays her eggs in a small container of water, let's say you empty that water out, in a couple days, the eggs can survive from one season to the next. So the next rainy event come, that eggs can still hatch and become adult mosquitoes. So, how do we do, how do we get rid of them? So we have a situation where most people that know, that don't know that they have the Zika virus, and we have a mosquito that live around your home, so what do we do? Um, mostly, we talk to folks about educating them about how easy it is to actually get rid of this title mosquito around your home. And the simple, easiest thing to do is just get rid of standing water around your home, because if they can't read, they can't fly, they can't fly, they can't bite you. Um, so drain, 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 anything that you have. We have all kinds of flyers and door hangers that we print up, we'll leave some here, and if you need more, we, we can give out some. Um, we, when we get notices, uh, from the health department of each of those cases, we go through and we do a very thorough investigation. Uh, backpack, we spray to kill the adult mosquito, we introduce Laver Sy wherever we can to get rid of them, to make sure they don't come back and multiply. Uh, we set our traps as well, uh, and then we'll send our entomologists, and we've done this over and over and over again this last year. Um, and I'll go through the number in a minute here, but it's in the thousand when we get these cases. Okay, next one. So, what have we done for Southwest Ranches? Uh, the, like I said before, the best and most effective way is to get rid of this mosquito is to get, go after them in the larvae stage. So what we've done so far is we treated Catch Basin on all the major county roadway within Southwest Ranches. We've also met, um, with Russell and several of your staff to train them on what to look for. Uh, we encourage them to provide a Laver Sy product into a storm drain, any, where they just have standing water, and that's the best way to get rid of them in the first place. Next one. Now, we get a lot of questions about the products that we recommend. Um, here, there's a few things that we do to get rid of this, this ADI's Jiptai, the title mosquito that pass on Zika. All the product that we use to get rid of this mosquito, when we Laver Sy, are all natural ingredients. In fact, all this is just natural bacteria that has been found on earth that have been reformulated. Some of the bacteria that we use to spray in truck for Laver Sy is actually organic, uh, is recommended by the World Health Organization. You can spray this over organic farm, it'll still be organic. Uh, it's safe for human, pets, uh, all kind of animals, and, um, it actually doesn't even kill the mosquito, it kills the larvae of the mosquito. Um, and it's safe for bees and other animals as well. So, where are we at? Now, you can see here, we have no local transmission in Broward since the declaration emerged this last year. In fact, we've never had active local transmission. The two numbers you see up there are the confirmed Zika cases for our, uh, in the tri-county area. Now, the travel cases, they are what they are, they're exactly what that means, is from folks that have traveled elsewhere, contracted disease, but they were back here, or they are back here in Broward County, and there's really not a whole lot we can do about those, 'cause we don't wanna keep people from traveling. The number that we really wanna affect is the one at the bottom, which is the local case. And so far, you see, we've been fairly successful, wish that number was zero, but we had one that happened last August, and the state health department was able to close that case, because they tested other people in that area, and no, no one else came up positive, so they were able to close that case. An important thing to remember about this is, if there's more than one case in one square of my radius, the CDC will come in and declare that an active local transmission, which the media would love to hype and call it a Zika zone, and which is exactly what happened in many areas, in De County, you know, it started out with Wynwood, then it went to Miami Beach, then Little River, and so on, so forth. We have not had that situation happen in this, this county, and I hope with your help and your staff's help, it will continue to be that way. Next one. So, how can you help? Uh, Laver Sy, which is what the product we recommend to your staff already, on storm drain and standing water, uh, any city property that you have, tip, toss, and cover any standing water around your buildings or parks. Let us know if you wanna, one of our mosquito control inspectors come by and point these things out, it's a free service. Uh, if you have any kind of event in your, your town, let us know, please, we'll send an outreach team out there, uh, we'll talk to folks, they wanna talk to us about the different ways to protect themselves. We also give out free Laver Sy whenever we talk to these folks. You can buy these online for about twenty bucks, we give them out for free. We were able to get a, some money from the state health department to buy a bunch of these. Uh, if you use Twitter, you know, follow us on ZapZiKabrower or our website, and if we get a, um, a local case in your area, we typically ask for the town manager's support for law enforcement, so we can go through and cover many areas very quickly, because time is of the essence to break that chain of transmission. Okay? That's all I have, and I'll be glad to answer your questions.
All right, um, I had a resident call me, said that they called you all and you were short staff of drivers. What can you tell me about that?
Sure. Over the last two weeks, ever since the storm, we experienced anywhere from fifteen-hundred to three thousand sprayed requests per day. Uh, we have a staff, a full-time staff of fifteen people total. We have a staff, a full-time staff of 15 people total for mosquito control in the whole county. And this is a population of about 1.9 million people. We have about 500 square mile radius. However, we have trained additional staff, and they are, not just driver, but they have to have a license in order to spray. And we have dispatched them throughout the southwest and part of the county, including Southwest Ranches. Unfortunately, right now, we are keeping up with the calls. Unfortunately, right now, we're not able to respond by phone or email to let folks know that we've been in that area. And that's probably part of the situation, that people might not know that we've been there, because we do spray very early, in most cases. But I can tell you right now, through the last few weeks, we adult acide multiple times within the entire town during the early morning hours. We've had a crew out here working throughout the day, adult aciding through this whole week. The entire town, every single square feet has been Larvicide, but we do that at night from 10:00 p.m. to about 6:00 a.m. in the morning, because that stuff comes out, and we don't want to wake people, don't want people to walk into it, even though it's safe.
And how about the airplanes that used to fly?
We do, we still have the airplane. The negative side about, there's some negativity to come with airplane. Number one, weather has not been good to fly, and it's very, very prevalent, very hard to get permission to fly in Broward County from the FAA, because the whole county is concerned, and what they call a congested air. So we have to have a certain time, and by the time we request it, the weather might change, and we're not able to fly. The other downside is the chemical that we use to spray throughout the airplane is called Nalit, and there are some negative consequences to Nalit, because it is an insecticide, even though it's been used in mosquito control for a long time. There's some very negative press right now, so we're very concerned, because folks are concerned. Unfortunately, with the airplane is very unforgiving. We mark out an area, and the airplane spray is gonna spray the whole area. There's just no way around it. With the truck spray and the backpack spraying, if there are some folks with chemical sensitivity, you can turn that machine on and off before we get there. So we're able to cater a whole broad range of people. So that's made the main, the few reasons why we haven't flown yet. But it's still a weapon on our arsenal, and when we need to, we can still use it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question. If you have, like, a lot of standing water in your backyard, is there something we can buy to actually spray the top of the water, or spray the area to kill any of the larvae that would be in there? And the next question is, if you have horses or cattle or whatever you have in your backyard, is there something that can be put on them? You know, like, we put Skins So Soft, or Deep Woods, or whatever. What can be actually put on the animal?
First of all, on the animal, the best way to get rid of them right now is for larvae, to treat your standing water, because if they don't multiply, because if you spray and kill the adult mosquitoes, the next few days, they'll come right back, because the next batch will hatch, and they'll come right back. So we gotta spray again. So, to answer the first part of your question, yes, there are things you can buy. In fact, this is the product you can buy online right now. You put one of these in any standing water, it will go on to kill the larvae in that standing water for up to 60 days. It's good for, it's organic. It's good for, in fact, it was designed in another country for drinking water supply. It's not approved here for drinking water, but in other countries it is. You only need one of these in a 50-gallon container of water. We give them out for free to folks that may not be able to afford it, or anybody that asked for it, really, at this point. For on the animal spraying, I don't know of a product right now that's on the market, but I'll be glad to have my folks researching, get back to you on that.
So the standing water, like, if it's still in your backyard, you're still holding water, is there something you spray on it, or just go out there with the tablets and just drop them in the?
Just drop the tablet in there, because what happened is, the mosquito will lay her eggs in there, the eggs will develop and turn into a larvae. The larvae needs a food source in order to become the mosquito, the adult mosquito. It eats the larvae, and they don't, they die.
So you hear that, Steve? You better get a bunch of those and dump them in your backyard.
I need them.
All right. Anybody else up here? Public, the public's got questions for you.
Yes, sir.
You can feel free to turn around, or take that out and hold it, if you like.
Yes, sir.
I live out on the west side of the highway. The law keeps blocking out your way. The spray truck came by, and did absolutely nothing. I know it killed a million mosquito, but when you've got 10 million mosquitoes there, you've done nothing. The only thing that's ever done any good out here, because of the distance between the streets, is aerial spraying. If we don't have aerial spraying, you might as well not even send the truck out here. It does nothing.
That's, you're right. With the truck, you have to get into your property. That's why we sent a crew out there, out here with the ATV vehicles and the backpack, backpack that goes right behind it. Now, if you have a particular problem, and allow us access to your property, we'll be glad to do it. But you have, you have to allow us access onto your property. Now, the other part of your question on airplane spraying, if the town really supports the aerial spraying with the Nalit chemical, you let me know, and we'll find a way to make it happen.
I think we need it.
We have to do that effect somewhere. We called twice for a spray, and both times we said, "Well, the truck's gonna be out there." That's it. And not saying we couldn't come on your property, never said that. They just sort of say, "The truck's coming out, we've got 3,000 calls a day, we gotta go on to the next call."
The ATV has been out here, and they've been knocking on doors now. They may have not got to you yet, but you give me your address, I'll make sure they get to you. The truck comes out so early in the morning, we're not gonna knock on people's door at 2:00 a.m. The ATV is the one that comes around right after that and knock on people's door, along with the folks that go, you know, on foot with them. You give me your address, be glad to get to you. Okay? Yeah. And again, if the town supports the aerial spraying, just either, you know, it has to be obviously something that the whole council supports. I'll be glad to find a way to make it happen, although it does depend on the FAA regulations, and it does depend on weather and all that other stuff that comes along with aerial spraying. Yes, ma'am?
Um...
Lady first.
199 Avenue, and I would tell you that I was up around 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and I heard the truck coming several days ago. I saw the lights on the truck, and it went approximately three quarters of the way towards Griffin, which is where we live.
Griffin and where, 199, you said? Okay. Is it way or way or F? Did you say way? I'm writing, she's writing it down, so I'm trying to get your address.
Oh, yeah, we've always had.
Okay.
The truck came about three quarters of the way, with the truck on and you sprayed. When it got up, just about from the center of my property, it shut off. It moved up to my neighbor's properties towards Griffin. The machine was not on, the lights were on, it sat there for a long time. Nobody got out of the truck, nobody did anything, and they were not spraying.
Okay.
So my question is, is there a limit to amount in the trucks when they're sent out? And when they get to a certain area, they're supposed to be spraying, and they run out, they don't have to be spraying? And nobody else is coming back to the neighborhood?
No. The, there's enough chemical in that truck to pretty much go all the, the whole shift, essentially. I'm not sure, if you give what day is exactly, I can find out who was there and why that happened. Yeah.
I just know the lights were on, the truck was on, I heard it, but then the truck shut off, left the lights on, and just ran.
Now, the other part of this is that, on the state registers list, there are places within the town or the county that we are not allowed to spray. For example, if there are folks with chemical sensitivity, they register themselves on the Department of Agriculture list. We have to draw a radius around that property, and we cannot spray because of some medical reasons. If we cannot, and you need us, we can go on foot to your property, so we don't affect them, and we can provide service to you.
That would be great, but that was never offered. Even when I called to ask for spraying, they'd say they could come out, you know, but they never said that they could actually come on your property.
Okay. What you can do, because we've gotten so many calls, the best place to do it is on our website. There's requests to spray, and you can make a note on there that, that, "Please, please come to my ass, please come to my property, here's my contact number," and we'll schedule to come on your property. Obviously, we're not gonna do it early in the morning, you know, we'll come when you're awake, so.
Whatever time you get it there, I personally don't hesitate to say torrent of blood.
Okay.
You got a gentleman in the back.
But I gotta get your exact address. If you give it to her right now, then you don't have to log it into the website and do it, so.
You have a gentleman in the back of the room.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to see you back here.
I can see you.
All right. I want to support your point on aerial spraying versus terrestrial spraying, and I'll tell you why. I mean, our properties are 600 feet long by 250, 350 feet deep, so when you're spraying along the road, you're probably seeing hair on the road.
I told you we'd be late there.
Or thumbnail, et cetera, but out here, you're just getting mosquitoes off the road, just a little too much. Now, regarding being ATC in there to spray in the yard, it's a great idea, but if you ride around Southwest Ranches, a lot of people like that privacy, so they've got fences, they've got high bushes, you won't get on their property either.
Right.
So, you know, I would support, I understand what's going on with aerial spraying. I've been reading about the side effects, but it's worked for us for years, when in the past, when you guys come running and spraying, that afternoon, there's no more mosquitoes. And they're generally gone for a week or so, or until a big storm.
Right.
It blows them, brings them in, or dumps them up rain, or things like that.
Right.
I do want to bring something up, my lovely wife passed on to me that is working. We are big users of off and deep. I mean, I go to the Everglades all the time, and I hate using that stuff, because it's probably safer to drink the aerial pesticides than it is to use deep or deep woods off. They're pretty nasty things. Believe it or not, and this, check it out for yourselves, peppermint oil. You get it at the health food store. I put it on all my hotspots, behind my neck, behind my knees. Last weekend, the weekend before, not getting chicken.
Peppermint oil.
Peppermint oil.
Wow.
And it's amazing, it really works. I even put on the dog, because she...
Thank you for that. And by the way, the other thing that you, since there's such a discussion about the aerial spraying, by the way, just so you know, lemongrass also work, if you plant it in your garden. I have them, they work. The negative consequences that everybody's concerned about Nalit, there's a few things that folks need to be aware of. If you read the label on Nalit, it sounds really scary, it really does. But keep in mind, when we do aerial spraying with Nalit, it is one teaspoon mixed in a big container, enough to spray over a whole football field. So the dilution is so minute, that's why we're allowed to do that in where human live. And we don't do it very often, quite honestly. You know, we do it maybe once or twice a year in one area. The negative press has been coming around and talking about is because if you do that a lot, it does, it's bad, but it's mostly done through, in agriculture, not so much over population for mosquito. And if you live in this area, you would know that we don't do aerial spraying very often. Maybe once or twice a year, even in the past, so.
All right, well, I think, I believe that most of us are on board with the aerial spraying as needed.
Okay. I got it.
We got one other question, then we're gonna have to let you guys ask him separately, because we gotta move on with this meeting.
Same question, so when you say that it's bad, can you be more specific?
The side effect, if you read, and the best place to do it, just Google Nalit, and there's a ton of literature on it. Okay. Keep in mind, when you're reading that, that it's been used for decades in this country for mosquito, that dilution is so minute that if you have anything in high concentration, it's gonna be bad. But when you dilute just about anything, it's gonna be a lot better, because it's diluted, you know. So, I'll be glad to take your question outside, if that's okay, so the town can move on with the agenda. I'll step outside and answer your question, if that's okay.
Awesome. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Greatly appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any literature that you'd like to leave, or whatever, put on that table back there, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. And feel free to come back. All right.
Mayor, we're up to a public comment.
Yep. Hold on, we gotta do the LPA.
Oh. You wanna do that first?
Yeah, we gotta suspend this meeting and start the LPA hearing.
Public comment.
So we gotta do the pledge over. Okay.
You wanna do LPA?
That's where they had it. That's where they set it up. I don't know what to talk about. So, all right. So we're gonna suspend the regular meeting and start the LPA meeting, so we get to start and do the pledge all over again and whatnot.
Do you need a motion to suspend?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to suspend the meeting and move on to the LPA meeting.
Second.
Awesome. We need to call the question?
No.
Don't need to?
Okay.
Mayor has confirmed.
All right, let's stand for the pledge again.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the freedom of speech, liberty, and justice for all. Boy, that was out of sync.
That was right.
Man, that was my...
That was out of sync. All right.
What do they have, a double session?
Okay.
Yeah, roll call.
Councilmember Schroder? Yes. Councilmember Fisickelli?
It's more like here, isn't it?
Just here, it's roll call. Roll call.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Read this. Read this.
One second, ma'am.
Yep.
A resolution of the local planning agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council amend the text of the future land use and transportation elements and the definitions of the Town of Southwest Ranches comprehensive plan pertaining to streets and access and providing for an effective date.
Who was?
Mayor Jeff Adams is here to give a one-second overview. We discussed this at the last meeting at length in the council.
Which one is this?
This is the street issue that was discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, mayor, very simply, this makes some adjustments to policies that are in the plan, one in the future land use element, a couple in the transportation element, to reflect the nature of the town's rural roadway network, by simply discouraging and prohibiting whenever possible through streets and through traffic. It recognizes 184th as a future two-lane corridor, but other than that, that's what it intends to accomplish. And the, one of the, I think this is the next ordinance for the Land Development Code, gets a little more specific about how we do this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this item?
David Kazinsky, 6411 Holley T. Trail. I was just concerned about the issue of the two-lane corridor on 140, 184th. Can I have a little more explanation of what this is, please?
We made a, Keith, we made a resolution a long time ago.
184th.
That's part of the comp plan.
It's part of the comp plan board, so it's all in there.
Okay.
Seeing no other public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us, any questions, anybody has? Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
A resolution of the local planning agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida,
A resolution of the local planning agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council amend the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Article 90, entitled Subdivision Design and Access Standards, providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back here, any discussion on the item?
Jeff, have anything to say?
No. Jeff, nothing from you?
Only if you want me to say something.
Okay, I'm good. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
A resolution of the local planning agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council amend the text of the future land use element and the definitions of the Town of Southwest Ranches comprehensive plan by revising the definitions and plan implementation provisions relating to community facilities and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Any discussion up here? We're good? All right, call the roll.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
He said yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
A resolution of the local planning agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council amend the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Article 10, entitled Definitions to amend the definition of the term "family," recommending creation of a new article, 141, entitled Reasonable Accommodation Procedures, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Any discussion back here? Seeing no discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
You gotta approve the minute.
Yep.
Yep.
No.
Motion for the minutes?
Motion to approve.
For the LPA meetings.
Second.
It's two of them, can we do them together?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody have any comments about the minutes to the public? Seeing no comments about our minutes, public comment closed, back to us. No discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I need a second?
Second.
Okay.
Back to the regular meeting.
Reconvene the regular meeting, number five, Mayor, which is public comment.
All right.
Okay. Do we have any cards? We only have one card. If anyone else wishes to speak during public comment, we need your cards now. No, I think they're filling out. Bob, you're the public comment.
Bob Hartman, 5441, Southwest 198 Terrace. Want to bring everybody up to speed on an issue that has been talked about without the basis of fact for probably, I don't know, four years now, five years now? How long goes 2013 when it ended? I guess that's already four years ago, yeah. So, there's been a lot of discussion on trains being run up and down US 27, and I was getting a little crazy about it, because I've lived near train tracks, I've lived near freight yards, and if you want to know what it's like, go spend an afternoon down in Hialeah next to the freight yard, you'll want to get out of there as quick as you can. So, I did a little research after, really, like I said, getting pretty upset about trains out west, and there was a commission study back in, a study commissioned back in 2010 to look at the feasibility of relieving the highways of some of the traffic that they expected from the ports being widened and deepened based on the increased capacity for the Panama Canal. And part of that discussion was, well, what are we gonna do with all these extra trucks that are gonna come in to pick up all the cargo coming off the ships? So, somebody had the great idea to come up with a situation where the trains will take them out of the port, which is a good idea, but then they bring them to Hialeah, and they'd either be staged to go to points north, or they'd be picked up by trucks and distributed locally down in Dade County. All sounds good, except for that part of running trains up and down US 27. We're talking freight trains, not commuter trains. So, again, you know, the latest was they're gonna put a train yard right across from Sterling Road, and, you know, Bergeron's gonna have a spur coming in, and it just, whatever you can imagine, I guess, can happen. So, after I got a little crazy, I figured, let me start calling some people I used to know at DOT, and I talked to people in Tallahassee, and then I talked to people locally. Essentially, yes, the study was done to try to relieve the freight traffic from Miami. Yes, they had recommended three different train routes. Of course, the one we were talking about for years doesn't even exist on their plans. People were talking about them running up and down the canal there that borders the Everglades, the one that you go over when you go to Holiday Park. Well, that's never gonna happen. What their plan was, is to either redesign US 27, so that the trains would run either down one side, or the other of the existing highway, and they put more lanes in for cars and trucks to run on, or they put it right down the middle. So, that was their three options, they were never talking about. And they're taking everything into consideration when they do this plan. This was done by one of the state's contractors, engineering study, one of the engineering firms that does these studies. Kind of...
Go ahead, we'll wrap it up.
So, what it comes down to is, unless the Broward County MPO, and Freddie, you gotta go to bat first, if anybody talks, you gotta bring it back here, so we can get the troops united. But if the Broward County or the Palm Beach, the Dade County MPOs really want to make this happen, then the state will look at it. The state has no money, it's on the 2045 plan, like 184th is, so it won't happen unless somebody starts to make it happen. If this thing does heat up, I think we want to get people to protest against it, because one of the things they mentioned in the study is that it will have negative impacts on property values in western Weston. Now, western Weston doesn't go halfway as far to 27 as Southwest Ranches does, we run right up to it. So, if they're concerned about property values basically north of us, they would impact us as well. And I really think that if this does gain any traction in the future, even if it's 2045, at, let's see, I'll be about 90, I'll be happy to be there to support this. So, I just want to give everybody a heads up, it's not there now, but if anybody hears anything real from the government, not their neighbor said, please let us know. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Anyone else? No one else? All right. Public comment is closed? Back to our regular meeting, how about board reports? Any board reports? All right. Seeing no additional board reports, council member comments? Dee, you up to bat?
No, I'll let Gary go first.
Okay, keep it brief, got a few things to let everybody know about in TV land and here in town. Thank you, everyone, thank you all for coming, we appreciate you coming and lending your input. Start off, on this Saturday, we have a very busy day. We have the 24th, we have the amateur radio event, the ham radio event at the Equestrian Park, that's an all-day affair, please come to that if you'd like to see how emergency communications work. And by the way, just a pearl of wisdom that most people don't know, that the reason it's called ham radio is because it relied solely on Morse code at one point, and they could tell by the speed of the connection of the Morse code who the operator was, because everybody had their own little footprint, and the guys that were a little too much, they were ham-fisted. That's how the word "ham" got involved into it. So, just FYI on that.
Cool.
It's the same, but anyway, I'm full of some arcane knowledge. Then later on that night, we have At the Barn, the history of rum, put on by Dr. Knight, Aster's brother, and he is a fascinating individual to listen to, he's from John Hopkins University, and there'll be some rum tasting, and little hors d'oeuvres, and Aster, did you ever want to come up and say anything, or I'll donate a minute of my time, no problem at all, if you want to elaborate on that, that's coming up?
But actually, it will be a very interesting evening. He discusses the history and connoisseurship of rum, and that is a very interesting topic. We expect to have about 100 people there. Our tickets are all sold out. So, we're looking forward to an interesting evening, as Gary says, we have hors d'oeuvres and stuff there, and we have some raffles of special exotic liquors, and rums really, I can't call it liquor, but yes, we have some special ones, some Cuban rums coming in, which we can't get here, and other very high-quality rums. So, it will be an evening well worth attending. So, we look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, the proceeds all go, come back to our community, they go into our Parks Foundation and into our parks, which is, so you're really supporting the town, you know, by going to this, and you get to have some fun, so, just want to mention that. July 4th, we have a celebration at the barn, where we're going to have an old-fashioned picnic, bring your own basket, and decorate your lawnmower, ATV, whatever you're bringing, golf cart for a parade at the barn, there'll be more on that coming up here shortly, I believe, no, I'm sorry, that's, you have to go to the website for that one. We have hazmat in the park on the 8th, at the Rolling Oaks Park, from 8 to 2, and they're gonna have the document shredder there at the same time. We have bingo at the barn on, this is another Parks Foundation event on the 12th of August at 6:00 PM. Are you pre-selling tickets for that, Aster?
Yes.
Okay, there'll be pre-selling tickets for that. I need to bring this up, I would like to bring this up, the staff gave me this right before the meeting, we have something new coming along, new to us, it's called the Vulnerable Population Registry, and I'm just gonna read to you verbatim at this point what this is, and it's, the Vulnerable Population Registry is a year-round, all-hazard program that allows people who would be at risk following an emergency to register in advance, so that emergency workers may plan a better response during a recovery program. Why you should register? If you have a disability or health issue that would make you vulnerable during an emergency, and you prefer to shelter in your home rather than be evacuated, you should register in the Vulnerable Population Registry. Registration does not guarantee that you will be provided services or placed on a priority list for emergency responders, however, it would help your community to be better prepared to respond. And you can do several ways to register. One, you can dial 311, which I didn't know that one, you can go online at broward.org/atrisk, all one word, or you can call Town Hall, here, at 434-008, and ask to speak to Sandy, she was in the, Sandy, you hear, there she is, Sandy Longo, our special projects coordinator, or Susan Kurtz, the, one of the wonderful people that answer the phones and works the front desk. That number again is 954-434-0008, and you can register for that, and it's a good thing to know, and we also have an emergency shelter map. Can we get this on the website, Sandy? Would that be, I think that would be helpful if we could, we could post that on the website. Of course, Andy, this is in your bailiwick, Andy, so, I just wanted to mention that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Awesome.
Next, Dee, you wanna go next?
Okay, I'll go.
Okay.
You don't have to.
No, I want to. I just wanted to take and send a direction toward Andy to promote these dunks, to put in, you know, at Town Hall, so people could come in and maybe get some to put in their water troughs where animals are, they make the little teeny-tiny ones that you can actually put in plants. Some of our plants hold a lot of water, so it's a good mosquito breeding place. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, I'm looking at my notes here, hold on, give me a second here. I guess that's it, that's all I got.
All right.
Yeah.
Good. Freddie, anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Steve?
No, the only thing I was gonna mention, has already been talked about, is the...
The rum.
...for Astronight and his brother being here, it sounds like a great event, hope everybody's there.
Good.
The rum event.
I'm good also, so, I hope to see everybody at the rum event also, so, or the ham radio event, so, I'm good. Let's see what else we got, legal.
Legal.
Keith, you're up to bat.
Sure, Mayor, and it's a pleasure speaking before Andy, because I can feel his thunder.
I figure that.
Couple, Andy and I had a really big week, and thanks to Russell and Marty and the rest of staff that helped to bring some things to conclusion. We had our final meetings with Waste Pro this week, we were able to successfully negotiate a long-term waste collection and disposal agreement, a 10-year term, which is, for municipality is nice, it goes five and five, and although the collection rates are higher, which you all have known for months, or rolling back to the 2012 rates, for multiple reasons, the potential disposal rates, when that comes back up, because that contract's about to expire, are actually lower. So, the town in 2018 would potentially save money, even though that, in going forward, even though the initial rate is going up slightly. So, that was very good news, that contract's signed, and it's sitting at Town Hall waiting for your next agenda, which we're having a special meeting on June 29th, for the sole purpose of approving the waste collection and disposal agreement, because we need to get that on track immediately to start the transition process. So, that meeting is coming up in two, in a week, next Thursday. Second issue that I wanted to raise is Rick Stark, Representative Stark, mentioned the cannabis bill that passed in the legislature. One thing that he mentioned that wasn't 100% correct is a municipality cannot 100% prohibit cannabis retailers from going into their municipalities. There's been articles saying they can, but those articles are misreading the law. So, what essentially the law states is there has to be parity between where a municipality places a pharmacy and where it places a distribution facility for cannabis. As a result of that new legal requirement, and based on the current moratorium that's in effect for the town, for multiple reasons, the town is working on, and Jeff, I sent you an email on this, a very simple ordinance that would grandfather in as legal non-conforming use our one pharmacy that we do have, and then all future pharmacies in the town will be restricted to the M4 zoning district in the town, which will help to relieve the town of the life safety situations of not having enough police to police those locations, which is just a reality of Southwest Ranches. We have a very limited police force, and these stores require extra police protection that is not in our contract or in the cards right now. So, that's coming back before you, hopefully, Jeff, the next meeting, first reading, so, next official meeting, not the June 29th meeting. We had a few issues with Griffin 345, we're working them out, we're very hopeful that we can get those contracts signed to enable the funding for their gates and for that project to come to fruition, but if anyone has questions on that, Andy and I have had a very busy week with that as well. Other than that, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Andy, I guess you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to thank the town attorney for including the administrator's report within the legal update. And recognizing we've got a lot of ground left to cover tonight, I don't have anything further to add at this time. Thank you.
Whoa. Okay. All right. Let's get rocking and rolling, I guess. Read ordinance number 10.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, submitting to referendum amendments to the town's charter, proposing to amend Article 4 legislative by adding Section 4.10, entitled Long-Term Lease or Sale of Property Owned by the Town, to place restrictions on the sale or long-term lease of property owned by the town, excluding rights of way, property less than the minimum lot size required... less than the minimum lot size requirement, property that was acquired through foreclosure, and property not located within or adjacent to a town park that was specifically acquired for resale or lease purposes. Proposing to amend Article 5 quasi-judicial by amending Section 5.01 to require the unanimous vote of the entire council for all land use and quasi-judicial items. Directing the town clerk to provide for a notice of advertisement of the referendum election to be published in accordance with the State of Florida Election Code, providing that this ordinance, when adopted, shall be submitted to the qualified voters of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida at the election on November 6, 2018, enacting a zoning and progress for the town council to act in accordance with these ballot measures until they are voted upon by the electorate, providing that such voted upon by the electorate, providing that such referendum, if adopted, shall become effective as provided by law, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, just to sum this up, these are, you're voting on two ballot measures, meaning that you're voting on the idea to place two items before the electorate to vote upon. They're two distinct items, but by regulation, they had to be codified in one ordinance because that one ordinance then goes to the supervisor of elections with how the ballot measures are reviewed. The two items are pretty simple, as stated. One, in a nutshell, says that if a property owned by the town of Southwest Ranches is to be sold, meaning not a property that was bought for resale, like the CCA property, but another property, that could be a park or something of that nature, is to be sold, that it requires a unanimous vote of the city commission and then a referendum of the public before such property can either be sold or long-term leased. And that's what that item would be going to the electorate to decide. The second item for the electorate to decide is whether or not our code, which currently requires a supermajority vote, a 4-1 vote for quasi-judicial and land use items, whether or not that should be amended to require unanimous vote. So, those are the two items that passed on first reading that the commission sought to send out to the voters. It's here before you on second reading. If it passes today, it will be on the November 2018 ballot.
All right. I have a question. If this fails, both these items fail? Because they're all written, both written together?
Fail when?
Now. If this changes or fails or whatever happens to it, right now, it's two items in this one item.
Correct. I mean, this ordinance could always be amended.
Okay.
You know? All right. So, and, yes.
Well, I make, I'll start it off. I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
All right. Public comment, please.
Joanne Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. We as residents and founders must ensure for future generations that a knee-jerk reaction by members of our council will not forever change the course of our unique town and make our motto, preserving our rural lifestyle, nothing more than a note in our town of Southwest Ranches' history. Vote five necessary votes for change. We must allow our residents to speak. Recent events have shown that sidelining this right causes suspicion and makes us ask why. Vote yes, five to zero on this ordinance so that we may vote in the polls yes on the charter amendments to protect the future use of our town. We have always protected our town from outside influences. We now must protect our town from internal ones. Vote yes, five to zero. Written, spoken, and presented by Joanne P. Hollingsworth because I love this town and I have proven it. And if any of you up there who got in on election because you said you loved this town, then you vote yes to five-zero and protect it forever. Thank you.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th Avenue. And I couldn't have said it any better than Joanne, so everything she just said, I did owe that. I just, you know, something so important, I think it really, it needs to be a 5-0 vote, and then you put it to the residents through the referendum and a vote. Thank you.
David Kozensky, 6411 Holatay Trail. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and as president of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. My board has supported this issue. They want the 5-0 vote, and personally, I think it's a 5-0 vote. If you're, if you're against 5-0, then you're not supporting the rural lifestyle.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Avenue. I support the 5-0 vote and the referendum for the reasons Joanne stated, but also, I kind of worry. I like a set of handcuffs on the council that are really tight because what I worry about is now, I think property in town is going for a quarter of a million to a half million an acre. 10 years from now, it'll be double that. 10 years after that, triple that. Keep going. Sooner or later, somebody's going to come with a great idea, and maybe it'll be time to do something. But it'll still take the town agreeing and all of whoever that is in those, those days long from now. I just want to see us protect every acre we've got as long as we can because forget the town getting any more. There won't be the bond issues. The land isn't available. Nobody's going to knock down 10 houses to build a park. It's just never going to happen. So, you guys need to protect what we have. The other thing that I'm very concerned about now with what I hear going on at Town Hall is all these developers are approaching Andy and his team to discuss all their great ideas. This is going to put up a big sign in our town, "Not for Sale." They can go back to their job. Thank you.
My name is Miguel Chiaadet. I built a house on 7001 Appalachia Trail, and I love this town. I didn't build my house to look at a shopping center across the street from my house. There's, the developers, they've been going around for the past couple of years showing and the, and the meetings and Sunshine Ranches meetings, you know, this beautiful strip shopping center that they want to build. And, and I oppose this 100%. So, thank you for your time.
Joel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. As I said at the last time when this was up here, we have seen, I have seen so many developers that weekly come in to Town Hall and to Michelle Milgram's office and have these fantastic plans that they've got 10 acres or 25 acres that they can purchase and they want to put zero lot lines in. Our high-rise condominium, our several, five or six different high-rise rental projects, you know, with 2,000, 3,000 individuals that'll be in it. And we've only got so many people that live in our town. We don't need a dog wagging us. And that's exactly what it is, like a Century Village does at Pembroke Pines. I believe that anything that will tell the developers that you can't develop in this town the way you can in Pembroke Pines or Weston or some other place is going to be good. And we need to be able to, someday, it, we won't be the way we are, I know that. But 50 years from now, I want to be able to ask the question, if I was still here, are the horses still here? And if the answer is yes, then what we have done today has been correct. Because if the horses are here, you still have the chickens and the goats and the cattle and everything else. Because the horses are the high-dollar maintenance item. And if you have a horse, you're investing thousands of dollars every year in that horse. And that's the truth. A cow, you let it eat grass and you get a roll of hay, and that's it. A chicken, you get him some chicken feed and, you know, eat the eggs. But a horse is a high-dollar maintenance item. As long as we have the horses, we have everything else that we plan to have and want to have and form this town to have. And making sure. Thank you.
Rose Williams, 6011 Holatay Trail. I also agree with the lady who spoke first, Joanne. I've been here 23 years, and when I came home from church, usually I can come straight down Sterling from Flamingo. Now, we wait 15 minutes just to get past the tents and the people. I can't imagine another mall there. It would probably deter me from going to church, and I certainly don't want to do that. So, I asked for a 5-0 vote to keep our land what we wanted when we came here 20, 30 years ago. Thank you.
Gabriel Acosta, 6200 Holatay Trail. Happy to be in this town. I was living in Davie for over 15 years, and almost every month, I pass by, driving by with my wife and Ricky. He's dreaming about living here. Every summer, he says, "One day, we're going to be here. One day, we're going to be here." We love Davie because it's a town, but now it became what they are planning to do here. So, it's so much that money can buy, but when you live in this town, that's why it's called a town, it's not a city. I mean, when you come here, you enjoy the beauty, the place, the horses. To go in the golf cart, you're walking, and you can touch the horses, you can look the, what you don't find five minutes from here. So, why to kill something that is so beautiful that is, they can't do, already doing it anywhere else, why here? I think to keep it safe, to keep it clean, is, is beautiful. So, I worked 15 years about to move into this town because the way the city, the town, you handled the town, and I do respect that. And I'm so glad that somebody came to my door a few days ago. A young guy says, "Can you please come to a meeting?" I feel embarrassed, I had never been here before. I should have come, I've been here already for a year and a half. But he motivated me and my wife to say, you know what? Show off. Show go there and let them know that we moved here, the people are here because they know what is living in town, the difference is. Developers, they can go in a lot of places, they can continue moving north. There is nothing in Miami, okay, you know what? Pass Southwest Ranches, continue going north. It's like pass and go. That's why we should go here. So, I go with what Joanne is saying, I'm very proud of what she said, the way she spoke. So, thank you so much. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
My name's Stephen Gisson, Luray Road. I just want to say that Southwest Ranches is a wonderful residential community, and I just sure hope the vote is 5-0. I couldn't agree with Joanne more in some of the sentiments that she said. This is a great, wonderful community. My wife and I just love it here, and we just hope it just stays this way, and we certainly hope for a 5, 5-0 vote. Thank you.
My name is Brad McBride. I'm new resident, Southwest Ranches on 13851 East Palomino. I've rented there for a couple of years, but, you know, this is the first meeting, obviously, that I've come to, and I just find it hard to believe that there's even a question of how to vote on this ordinance. And we have a very special town. I tell you, I'm from Oklahoma originally, so this is the closest thing to Oklahoma and Texas that I could find here in South Florida. So, and I'd just like to keep it that way, and the only way that we can do that is have a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
John Williams, 6011 Holatay Trail. And I've lived out here just about as long as my wife has lived out here. (laughing). And I lived in Dade County before. If I wanted to live on Kendall Drive, then I would have moved to the south of Dade County. If I wanted to live on Pines Boulevard, then I would have bought property there. But I moved to Southwest Ranches because of the unique setting there in this part of the, of, of South Florida. So, I hope that we will see a 5-0 vote, and I agree with everything that everyone has said before. Thank you.
No additional public comment? Morelly? No additional public comment? So, your public comment's closed. All right. Back up here to the council.
I'd just say that I really appreciate all the public that's come out. This is a critical issue, it's an important issue, and it's very heartening to hear these sentiments and these comments, and I really appreciate it. This is what our town is all about. This is a great way to protect it, and it's exciting to see you all. Thank you for coming.
If I could jump in there real quick. First off, I'd like to thank everybody that came up to the mic to speak and, and in attendance. One of the things that I take away from what everybody said is they are looking for a unanimous council, not a divided council. I think that was pretty apparent. I would like to say this is probably the most significant land use or land ordinance that we have considered since 1999, '98. And I take it very, very seriously, and I really think that this will preserve our visions that we had for the future of this area for many, many years to come. And it will go before, if this passes as written, it will go before the electorate in November, go to the supervisor of elections, and then the public needs to ratify it by a 50% plus one vote. And I just want to put that back out on the record, if this passes tonight, as it's written. And I want to thank everybody for coming up and, and letting us know how you feel. I appreciate it very much.
Well, I got to tell you, I'm, I'm not in support of this, and let me tell you why. I think the added feature needs to be, right now, it takes three votes to make anything happen on that basis. But that's us making it happen. I believe the three votes should make it so it goes to the public. And here's why. You can't get five people to agree on a lot of stuff, okay? So, if we up here don't agree 5-0, you never get to see it or hear it. The public doesn't. So, it's my position that the public should see it and hear it, and the public decide. But I think that only needs three votes. So, what my, my position is, you can get three votes to get it to the public for you all to see it, hear it, and decide on it. We don't decide on it. We just decide that you get to hear it and see it, and you decide on it. So, by making it a 5-0, you may never see it or never hear it. So, I would tell you, me, for modification in this item, would be to add the fact that the electrics, it has to go to a vote, to the people to make the decision. We don't make that decision. Is that, is, did I explain that accurate, Keith?
You just want to reverse the order in the ordinance, the way that I understand it.
I want to make the public, right now, we're making it so the council has to decide unanimously before they even get to hear it.
Correct.
Okay.
You're reversing the order. What you're saying is...
I'm not agreeing. I want the people to make the decision. I don't think we should. I think they should.
So, you don't think the council should ever vote on it?
No. I think the council should vote on it, but whether it goes to a referendum to the people. In other words, I don't want a referendum of 5-0 because a 5-0 may never happen. I want the way it is at three, but go to the people, not us make that decision. Us make the decision that it's going to the public.
So, you want to make it a 3-0 vote of the council, which would then send it to a referendum to the public?
If I can say something?
Hey, can you just stop?
If I can say something? Instead of just a simple majority, if you went with a supermajority, you know, a four, four to one, that would be, you know, a little bit better. There's, there's, there's a compromise for everything. Everyone that's here tonight has, has been heard, but there's a whole lot of people in this town that haven't been heard.
That's why it goes to a vote of the people.
We agree.
We agree. I represent the Sunshine Ranches area, and whatever they want, I'm going to support it. And if they don't want A, I don't want A. If they don't want B, I don't want B. I'm going to support whatever the town votes on, but I feel the people have a right to be able to vote on something as important as...
be able to vote on something as important as this. And it has been said that if it's a super majority where everyone has to vote yes, there is a good chance that you will never get it. It will never come before you. You will not be allowed to vote on it. It won't go to the ballots. Then how would you feel if you didn't get the opportunity? And as taxpayers, as residents, as patriots to this town, all of us, we have that right to be able to vote on something as important as this. And it does need to go to the ballots, it does need to be voted on. But again, to get a super majority vote, I am going to bring up one thing though. They talked about town property. If the Green Meadow Sanctuary had been taken out of this, would you all feel the same? Because I believe this is what the big issue was all about, was the, was the Green Meadow Sanctuary, the five acres in there. We have tax increases. I didn't sit here last year and vote for a tax increase, but you all did, not me. I don't want my taxes going up. Right now we sit with a little over $10 million in our ad valorem. We've got $10,700,000 going out in police and fire. That's not going to get any cheaper. Your electric's not going to get cheaper. Broward County taxes is not going to get any cheaper. Nothing's going to get any cheaper. So you have to think about where your monies are coming from and the areas you want them to come from. I moved out here 30-some years ago. I like it. I bought two acres. I would have bought five, I couldn't afford it. I like the land around me. I like looking at the open spaces. But I want to be practical too. I don't want my taxes going up. I can't afford to have them go up and up and up and up and up. You got people filing for agricultural exemption. What do you think that does to your tax base? If we get an extra exemption from Broward County, what do you think that's going to do to your tax base? You can't just come in here and say, "Well, I don't want that, I want a 5-0." You have to think about all the avenues, everything, and put it all together. So if you want to go with a super majority, you know, like a four, a four vote, that's not being unreasonable. Five, your hands are tied. I mean completely tied. That means your hands are tied. That means you don't get it if we don't all vote. We were told at our last meeting that, what if you get a council up here that goes rogue? Who lives on what if? I've had a lot of bad things happen in my life and I can't live on what ifs anymore. Can't do it. It's not practical, it's not good for you emotionally, physically, and every other way. You don't live on what ifs. You live for what's here now and what you can do to fix it or to take care of it and make it as good as you possibly can. So stop and think about what you're asking for. Sometimes we ask for things and then later on, we're sorry, we ask for them. And I don't know if this is something that can be changed. You know, if we would vote for something like this, it goes on a ballot, it goes through, you know? I mean, if it goes through and this is what the public wants, I'm 100% in the game. I've got to support it because it's, the people are telling me this is what I want. And that's our job, to sit up here and basically give you what you want.
Okay. So anyhow, so my, my whole point is the 5-0 vote keeps it away from the public. I don't know how you see that or you don't understand it. You want to ask a question? Come on.
I don't want to be ignorant. Do make a decision.
Come to the mic. Come up to the mic. I don't have a problem with this.
We are here to be educated, right? So I'm not an expert on that.
Agreed.
So the question between 5-0 and 4-1, what I got was if we go 5-0, that means if the five says, "Wait, we agreed that we can sell the land," that means we don't have to do any, we cannot vote on it. We lost it. We lost the chance. If 5-0, the five people agree, you know what? Let's sell the land. That means we cannot do anything, right? Is that correct?
No. No. What it is, is all of us up here, all five of us-
Right.
-have to agree for you to ever see it or hear it.
Okay, so wow.
So my position is, I would rather, that is true. It's exactly true. Right now, the way it is, we can sell it without you hearing or doing anything with three votes.
Okay.
I'm not in agreement with that. I'm in agreement with keeping it at three votes, but the vote that it goes to the public and you all decide on a ballot in a vote. If you don't leave it at three, you more than likely may never see or hear about it. Because if we don't vote 5-0 with what this is on the ballot, if we don't agree, then you all, it will never go on the ballot and you will never hear about it.
All right, and if we go 4-1?
That could be modified to 4-1.
All right.
And right now it's three.
So let's say out of five, four agreeing, two say no.
Then you all get to hear it.
And then we go, and then we vote, no, and then 50 plus one votes we want, we say no.
Correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
I mean, okay, I got it.
Yeah. But you would never hear it if it's 5-0. At 3-0-
I want to hear it.
You will hear it. I want you all to decide. So my position is for the people to decide. And the way you get to see it and hear it, the easiest is with three votes and that's the way it is now, except it, it doesn't go to you. I'm saying bring it to the public with three votes and let you all vote on it and decide. And whatever you decide, we're required to enforce.
Mayor, can I just jump in?
Sure, jump in, Gary.
Yeah. Okay. You keep using the word "never" on 5-0. All right, we need to make something really clear here. I've been on this council for seven years, are quasi-judicial. I have never not had a 5-0. We have never not had a 5-0.
What if?
Quasi-judicial.
What if? What if you get a different council?
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is something this important should be unanimous decision of this council. There should be no compromise if you're selling town land. There should not be. It's the soul of our town. It's that important.
Right.
There should be not, I don't think there should be a compromise, at all.
No. But the compromise to me, it's not a compromise, it's letting the public decide. So my position is, the easiest way to allow you all is to send it to a ballot to you to say yes or no about whatever it is that comes forward to us. So if something comes to us and we want you to hear it on a ballot, all it takes right now is three votes and we decide. But I want three votes to decide, it goes to you to decide. Because when you reduce it down to 5-0, I'm in agreement, this, this council is usually quite united, okay? But my point is, I don't want to make it so you can't do anything, you, you don't hear it. And right now, with 5-0, you may never hear it. It may never come to the public.
Okay, so I have one more question. If it goes, if it goes 5-0, can that be changed to get 5-0 for us to know also?
That would be illegal?
Well, the 5-0, you would know about, you would, this isn't something done in secret. We need to make that real clear here.
Right.
That's what it's starting to sound like. This is not a secret cabal up here. We would, this would all be, if there was an offer to buy or to sell, purchase, property at least-
And 5-0 you agree to sell.
We would have an enormous discussion with public input on it. Then it would require a 5-0, the way this is currently written, then it would go to the ballot now.
But it has to pass 5-0 to get to you.
To get to the ballot, we would have to all agree first. This is the protection.
And then we decide yes or no.
Then you decide.
Yes.
Okay, so now I mean-
Now, the other part of this is, balloting is not free. It costs money to send it to the supervisor elections, especially if it's off election year. It's significant amount of money. It's tens of thousands of dollars.
We have an election every two years, so what we try to do is things of those items, we try to put them on then.
You pay per item.
So, so then my, my, just thinking based on my knowledge, I just got a little knowledge that I got here, so the more votes that we have, anonymous, the hardest for, is the hardest for you guys to decide to say yes or no.
It's more difficult.
It's more difficult for, for you to decide, but you say, "Hey, I want to sell." The five of you, then we can still go-
We don't say that. That's what I'm saying. We would vote, if something like that came up for us to sell and it was coming before us and we said, "Well, we want the public to decide." It takes three votes of us to make you all hear it. You're allowed to hear it and you all decide. You follow me?
But we're allowed to hear it at five also, right?
That's not correct either. Right now it takes three votes, period.
Right now to hear it.
Right.
We're trying to say get to five, so we can also hear it, but harder to decide.
Which part of this is good? It will give the public input. They will have to vote on it. So the way it is right now, we get to decide and that's not the way it should be. It should, something this important, and, and, and he used the word "never," something this important, does, do you honestly think that you wouldn't get all of us to agree?
Yeah.
But if, if the council changed and there was somebody and you couldn't get it, like, that's what I'm saying, to compromise and go with a 4-1, a super majority, that's a little bit more doable, you know, the three is, you know?
The most, the most important part, I believe, my, my point is for us to be able to vote at the end, yes or no.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's what you would get after the-
Keith, Vice Mayor, go ahead, right Chris.
Thank you. So think, think about what it is we're talking about here. We're talking about selling open space-
Correct.
-in our land and in our town. We have, certainly we have challenges from a budget standpoint in raising revenue, but we have a plan for that. We have a large piece of property that's out west, that's zoned M5, virtually anything can go there. It doesn't touch any of the rest of our town. We also have property out on US 27 that is being rezoned so that it can do commercial. That's how we're addressing the revenue issues that are growing in our town and it's a very, it's very-
You can sit down, by the way.
Okay, thank you. And so, so that's, and that's a critical part. I mean, let's face it, that's a critical part. Nobody wants to see their, their taxes go up. But let's think about what we're talking about here. We're talking about a piece of land that's open space that could be sold. So on a three to two vote or a four to one vote, think about, think about how this process is going to work. Because once it gets out into a public vote, it's going to be a commercial venture, which means somebody is going to be dumping huge amounts of dollars to get a message across that this property needs to be sold, or at least for a long period of time. And it's going to be the town versus some huge entity presenting that this, because they, they, they want it, they want to make money. So I, I get what you, I get the idea that we want to get this in front of the public, but as Councilman Jablonsky said, you're going to hear about it because it's going to be a huge debate up front here. But it's critical, I believe, to put as strong roadblocks in front of this. And you know what? If we have to do it, then I'm sure that the council will vote 5-0 to do it. And if we have to do it, then I'm sure the residents of this town will vote in favor of it. But if we don't have to do it, I want every roadblock we can possibly have to be in place to stop it from happening because it goes against the very heart of who we are and why we're here. So that's why I'm in favor of that. Yes?
You had this gentleman up, are you opening it up?
Listen, I, I'm going to let people come up and talk if they want to talk about it. I'm okay with that.
Our town is too important to allow a 3-0 or 4-1 vote. It needs to be 5-0 to protect this town. We cannot have it. Now, when you're saying we won't get to hear it, we won't get to vote on it, have you people heard of Sunshine? You cannot talk among yourselves. If you do, you're in big trouble. Ask our illustrious attorney. So it will always be up here for the residents to hear. It will always be up here, but it needs to be a 5-0 vote to protect this town and make sure that you are hearing everyone and you are not having a knee-jerk reaction or because you happen to be friends with one of the developers or something else is going on. It needs to be a 5-0 out in the sunshine and we will hear it and we will vote on those charter amendments. We will vote on them and you will vote to allow us to do that.
Go ahead, Bo.
I'm not going to scream at you. I have a policy about that. I just wanted to mention, I disagree with Dee on this what-if concept. That's what policy is all about. You say, "What if this happens?" When you set up every ordinance that you put together. So that argument, I don't believe is that important to this discussion. However, I think the way this is being discussed by you all, I, I sit here through all the meetings, I kind of know what's going on. For the folks that don't sit here through all these meetings, the terminology you're using doesn't make sense. We're going to, then it goes to you. People don't understand that's, that's a ballot in November on whatever year you guys decide on this. Or a special election like Georgia had this week, if you guys want to do it that way. It would be really good if somebody could say, "If we adopt this ordinance stepwise, this is the way the process will work." From you guys being brought something to, a, a, a deal by somebody, right on through you'll vote in November.
I'll have Keith do it.
If Keith can do it, if one of you can do it, great. I just, it's going back and forth and you're contradicting each other and I'm getting confused.
Thank you.
There's not really much contradiction right now by the council, even though it may seem that way, sorry, I'll speak in the, in the mic. There's not really much contradiction from the council right now, it's just the order of that, of what happens. So for example, if a developer comes to the town, let's say with a P3, a private, public partnership, and says, "I would like to develop the, whatever park, a park that doesn't have deed restrictions on it." There are a couple out there that don't. "I would like to build on the old town hall site." It's a good example. And they submit a proposal to the town. If the town council desires to look into that proposal or accept that proposal, what this measure would require would be a vote of the town council and then a vote of the public after the council has voted and not before, okay? Where there is disagreement now on the council is a very simple disagreement that may not be articulated properly. The mayor believes that the vote should be a simple majority vote to put it on the ballot for referendum. His position is that a 3-2 vote should be sufficient to put it before the electorate for the electorate to make a decision. Councilmember Jablonsky and Councilmember Bright Cruz have articulated that they believe that before a measure of that magnitude would ever go to the public, that it should require a 5-0 vote, a unanimous vote of the council. And, and without paraphrasing Commissioner Shorter, I apologize, it seems to be your position is that you're going to support what your residents want, but you are looking for a compromised position between the two of a super majority vote. A super majority vote meaning 4-1 before going to the public. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
So there are three positions being espoused by the commission and, and that's what the debate is now, which one to accept.
And we were, and we're all in the same boat in any fashion that we're discussing it, going to a referendum on a ballot for you all to get to vote on it. So it's not us making the call, just so you understand. But it just restricts harder and harder for you all to get on a ballot to ever see or hear something. I, I understand what Joanne Hollingsworth was saying, is that if you come to the meetings and attend, you'll kind of be, know what's going on or what's talked about or whatever. But on issues like that, I think it should go to the public to make those decisions. And I think it should be easier to go to the public to make the decisions, not harder. Obviously, some people want it really hard to even let the public hear about it.
I have a question.
That's what it is. Well, that, hold on. Correct me if I'm wrong. Three votes to get it to the, the public to hear it or five votes to get it to the public? That's not a lot more stringent?
You're wrong. You're wrong.
Explain how I'm wrong.
Because it's not to hear about it, it's to vote on it. There's two different things. Those are two different things.
It's to vote on it and/or hear about it.
To hear about it, it's going to be published all over.
Okay, wait, wait. I have a question for the town attorney.
There's a big difference between those two.
This 5-0 vote, that also is going to be on the ballot, whether or not the, the public wants this, correct?
This question is to be put on the ballot. So, if it gets approved the way it is today, the public would vote to say whether or not they wanted a 5-0 vote.
Okay.
And if it loses, it goes back to what it is.
If it loses, it stays the way it is.
Stays the way it is.
Yes.
And I can vote yes.
You're going to let her speak?
And the way it is, by the way, is just 3-0 vote of the commission with no vote of the electorate. That's what it is today.
Exactly.
Everyone understand that? I just want to make sure.
Excuse me, I have to leave.
Can you let her go first?
I just have a really simple question.
Thank you, Debbie.
I'm very novice to this. My question is, I don't care about a 3 or a 5 vote. My question is, you have a piece of property, you guys decide you want to sell it because we need another Walgreens, which we don't need, we have plenty. All right? My question is, is what is all the point of you vote 3 or you vote 5 when it should be the people deciding whether or not that piece of property should be sold to Walgreens or for a public?
Agreed.
Listen, I just want to tell you, the council is... And this is why maybe it's not coming out properly. The council is 100% unanimous in their belief that the public ultimately makes a decision.
Correct.
Where they're not unanimous is the number of vote that it would take to even bring it to the public.
So, you as yourselves can't decide to sell a piece of property without us knowing?
They can today. They can today. They're trying to prevent that.
So, to me, it passes. It can today, but not if this... Something of this version passes.
We're changing it and fixing it. That's what the point is here and that's why it came up. The question is, how easy or how difficult it is to get on a referendum for you all to decide. If it's three votes, it's easy to get on a referendum for you all to vote on. If it's five, you may never see it.
Well, like I said, I'm novice to this, but I won't be much longer. I think a 4-1, as you proposed, is perfect balance between the 3 and the 5. But as I'm sitting here watching you guys, I really don't see you disagreeing on a lot. You guys are joking and talking and you seem to know each other very well. But this is our town. I've lived here since I was six years old. I've lived here for a reason. And I'm leaving my home to my grandchildren.
Awesome.
Because this is the place that I want them to grow up. This is what I want them to be. And I don't want another Walgreens. We don't need it.
Right, agreed.
You know, as long as it goes to us and it isn't your decision alone...
We want the people to decide. We don't want to make that decision.
That's all that really matters in the end. Thank you. You answer my questions. Thank you.
Debbie? Thank you, by the way.
What I think is important about the 5-0 vote versus a 3-2 vote, or even a 4-1, but 4-1, I mean, it's better than whatever. But what's really scary about a 3-2 vote, and still I think it needs to be a 5-0, is if you have a 3-2 vote to sell a piece of property and now it goes on a ballot... So, you have the people who are at meetings. And as we've seen in what kind of prompted this to come up, there's misinformation that comes out through these meetings. Like, in the beginning, it's, you know, if we sell this property, we can... There can be all this revenue and it can reduce our... And keep our taxes from going up. Well, in the end, when all the studies are done, it saved this town, it was going to be $15,000 for the entire town. It's a bottle of cheap wine. But for people who aren't here, when they... When it's on a ballot and they say, "Oh, you know what? Our council, who's really looking out for us, our council voted to put this on a ballot for us to vote." So, for all those people who aren't at all the meetings, and you hear all the hearsay, and... But the council, it was a... They put it on a ballot, it must be, you know, the right thing for us to do. It's just way too easy for something that is so important, such a huge impact to our town and what this town was built on. I've been in this town from before it was a town. We were part of the whole thing to become a town. And it's so important to keep that integrity so that you do need a 5-0 vote. But a 3-2 is just... There is not that security because, like I said, because then it's getting all the right information, the true information to everybody, which, you know, unfortunately... Or fortunately, the weight of a council, it means something and it means something to the town. So, a 3-2 vote is just...
All right, I got to shut you down. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Just a quick recommendation.
You know how I stand on the 5-0? Perhaps, since it sounds like 5-0 from a council perspective, and I know you guys do 5-0s all the time, even on quasi-judicial, but maybe 5-0 is a bridge too far. Maybe 4-1 is the right number, but I haven't heard any discussion on the citizen participation. Right, I'm assuming it's a majority, which is half plus one vote. That's not that much of a challenge. We do that during our charter amendments. Perhaps it's 4-1 with three-quarters of the residents agreeing. It puts more power into the community's hands and gives you guys a little bit more flexibility. Just a thought.
I wanted to talk about the... Why it's so important about the 5-0 vote, about changing the zoning, especially on...
We haven't even discussed that side yet.
Well, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Three years ago, the developers came that they wanted to build a shopping center. So, why a shopping center and not residential? No, because the real estate's down. But what about now, that they came back again and they want to still do a shopping center? And I know for a fact that maybe some members of this council want to do a shopping center in the backyard of some of the houses on Appaloosa. I mean, how would you feel to have a shopping center behind your house?
You know, that's... The topic in discussion you have is for a different time. It's not for what we're discussing tonight. I mean, the vote is, going to be wrong, but in that avenue and what you're talking about, there's a whole lot of discussion. As you know, they've been to the HOAs, they've been to a lot of HOAs. It's been three or four years ago. It's been a long time ago.
No, they came not too long ago.
Okay, well, I'm saying, they did, but they laid low for a couple of years.
Yeah, I don't know what...
Anyhow, what I'm wanting at is, this is not for tonight's discussion, that item.
But that will be part of the zoning change.
That will be part of the zoning change. But that's part of any zoning change that they're talking about. They're not talking about just that.
That will facilitate them to build a shopping center there. I mean, if we...
It's a supermajority right now, 4-1.
Well, but I support the 5-0 vote. And some of you guys knew where even the water was coming from to bring it for the shopping center. So, that's not...
I don't know what you're talking about right now, but it's not for discussion right now. The 5-0 vote part related to those changes is, but the item itself is not.
David, because it's 6411, Holliday Trail. A lot of residents here from Sunshine Ranches who support the 5-0 vote. The whole purpose of the 5-0 vote is to preserve the rural lifestyle of this town. It's not to sell off town property to the cheapest developer who want to buy the land. We get... If you go through a 3-2 vote, or even a 4-1 vote, and it ends up going to the voters after that, then you're going to see an advertising campaign like you've never seen in your life.
You're going to see that anyway.
It is going to be... These developers are going to be after gazillions of dollars to develop this land and there's going to be ads running in everybody's mailbox. Doom and gloom, doom and gloom if you don't, if we don't sell this land. If we can stop selling the land, we're preserving the rural lifestyle.
Okay. Public comment is closed.
Mayor, can we call the question? I think we've gone around.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
No.
4-1 vote. It works. See?
All I can say is, you're going to wish you didn't do that later on. But wait, we'll see down the road. Listen, it's going to the public anyway.
I don't trust the public, though. That's what I don't...
Huh?
I don't trust the public.
Oh, okay. Well, that's... Apparently, two of my colleagues up here don't trust the public either.
They haven't lived out here long enough and they never come to these meetings, don't they?
Mayor, I don't think that comment was appropriate.
Too bad. I don't think so either.
I really don't. I do trust the public.
Right.
And I do work with everybody here, but I don't think that was an appropriate comment.
Well, in my opinion is... My opinion is that a 5-0 vote doesn't allow the public to get to have an input. So...
Yeah, but that's...
You guys brought that forward, I didn't.
It passed. We need to move on.
It passed? I'm done. I'm ready to move on. I'm good.
Okay.
Not crying about it.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida amending the text of the future land use element and the definitions of the Town of Southwest Ranches comprehensive plan by revising the definitions and plan implementation provisions relating to community facilities providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for recertification by the Broward County Planning Council, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, just for the public's purpose, by law, we have to redo the items that we did two hours ago. So, items 11 through, I think it's 14, were all just voted upon unanimously by the council, but required to read them in now that it's out the council, get a vote, and move on to the next item. So, generally, for the public standpoint, we incorporate all the comments made before so we don't have to do it all again.
We made it.
Made it. Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment closed. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida amending the definitions and the text of the future land use and transportation elements of the Town of Southwest Ranches comprehensive plan pertaining to streets and access, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for recertification by the Broward County Planning Council, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment closed. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Article 90, entitled Subdivision Design and Access Standards, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
In ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Article 10, entitled Definitions, to amend the definition of the term "family," creating a new Article 141, entitled Reasonable Accommodation Procedures, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida amending Resolution Number 2015-017 relating to the town's advisory committee board policy, amending Procedure Section 61G relating to the role of the board chair to provide for the removal of the board chair by majority vote of the town council for lack of civility, decorum, or for conduct, unbecoming of a board member, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Mayor?
Yes.
This was put on the agenda at the request, if I recall, of Councilmember Bright Cruz. And correct, was this yours? I forgot who this was.
I don't...
I remember who was the one.
I don't remember how this one came up, but I personally, I think, don't think this one ought to be scratched.
The first one.
The one we just read about a board... You know, it's the...
The first one was the motion that was... It was made, it was asked for us to put on the agenda.
I probably asked for it.
Right. Okay, to... No, no, this is not the three votes.
Okay. Then that's... Then this isn't the one I asked for.
Okay, this is the first one that basically says that the council can remove a board chair as chair for the remaining portion of that board term.
Yeah, that's a waste. I don't even know why we would do this one. I forgot who asked. I'm not in favor of this. I'm not in support of this.
Not on this one.
This came up as a potential compromise.
Okay.
And I don't think anybody likes it.
Vote it down.
We don't. Okay.
Yeah. You might not even need...
Well, we didn't have a motion or a second.
I make a motion that we...
A motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
Second denial on it.
Steve?
I thought we could just ignore it.
No, you got to formally deny it.
Second? No second on it? Somebody?
I can't.
Let's start over. What was it?
Yeah, you can.
I can? Oh, I'll second it then, if I can. Okay. For denial. Get rid of it.
Okay.
Goes away.
All right.
Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
You can do public.
I'm making a motion to deny this, correct?
Correct.
And I second it.
Yes.
They're killing it anyway. Doesn't matter.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida amending Resolution Number 2015-017 relating to the town's advisory committee board policy, amending Procedure Section 2, B, and C relating to the appointment of board members to provide for the appointment or removal of board members by majority vote of the Town Council, providing for conflicts and providing an effective date.
Mayor?
Yes.
And I, Russell just, I apologize, Councilmember Brightcruz, for saying the last one was yours. Russell said it came out of the meeting for discussion, and that's why we put it on there. But we don't have to worry about that one anymore.
Nope.
So, this one, Mayor, was yours?
Absolutely.
Okay. This was the item that was asked to be brought forward to require a, a vote of the council to appoint and remove board members, rather than each individual council member appointing a, a board member, it would have to be voted upon by the council.
Well, I, I think it was, the initial thought was appointments had to be approved by three council members. But I don't think it needs to work that way. The way I think this item should work is, we don't have to approve any, but for removal, like we did last time, that if we vote unanimously, not unanimously, but a 3-0 vote, that the person we remove has to stay off for a year.
That is definitely not how it's drafted.
I know it, I know, but I'm just asking, so...
If that's the desire, since it's your resolution, quite frankly...
Yeah.
Your goal would be to amend this resolution to state that any board, any member of the council gets to continue to appoint their board member, but if the council votes by a majority...
Right.
To remove such board member, that board member will be removed for the remainder of the term.
No.
For a year.
Not the remainder of the term, because if it's at the end of the term, and there's only two months left, they're only off for two months.
Well, I think it's baby steps, I think we need to start somewhere. Whoever makes an appointment, we don't, we don't get to have input on that.
Correct, that's our remand.
Everybody should be allowed to pick who they want.
We are remanding.
For removal, it's, it's a majority vote.
Right.
And you're gonna get your point across, whether it's two months or a year. So, we all make mistakes, and sometimes just having something like that come up...
So, you want it for the remainder?
I, I just want it to remainder, I think it should be the remainder of it.
I'll live with that, I'll compromise with that.
Yeah.
Can somebody tell me?
Okay, the motion is...
Keith will do it, let Keith do it.
Councilmember Schroeder, are you making that motion to amend the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so, and Councilmember McKay, did you second that, that?
I will.
Okay, so, the motion that's on the table is that it continues to be as it is today, that every council member can appoint their own board seat on the different boards, but that if a, a conduct of a board member is, is voted on for someone to be removed from a board, that it would require a majority vote of the council, and that that individual will be removed for the remainder of that term, noting that the terms are annual for every board in the town. So, they could be reappointed the next term.
Correct.
Yes.
I have some comments, but you may want to open it up to public.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't know which order.
Any public comment on this item? Come on up.
In the five minutes I don't spend with the town, and my job, and my family, I belong to other groups. Any of you members of Toastmasters? So, in Toastmasters, when somebody approaches the club to join and become a member, they're voted in, and they just happen to mention, once you're voted in, that the reason they do that is because, one time they had to throw somebody out, and they really had no justification or right, because they didn't vote the person in. They follow Robert's rules, they do a lot of things like you do here, particularly with decorum. But at the end of the day, it's hard to pull them out without a vote, without voting them in. So, they vote them in, and if somebody becomes a problem, they vote them out. So, I think this supports the same concept, and I think it's a good idea. Vote them in, vote them out, definitely keep with the appointment process. But if you vote them in, then you can have the right also to take them out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, just for your knowledge, this does not require them to be voted in.
The motion right now is not...
They amended the resolution that you're reading.
We have modified it, so only take them out of the...
Heard it three times, thank you.
We modified.
You are correct, we modified it during this meeting.
Right, right. Vote them in, vote them out.
No. We removed the part of voting them in.
Okay. Joanne Hollingsworth.
Let me just clarify for the public. Since you are sitting here...
Yeah.
They amended this resolution to appoint them in, not they, two council members amended the, the resolution, to appoint them in, vote them out.
I disagree with that.
Would you like the floor back?
No, thank you.
Go right ahead.
Joanne Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. It's a matter of rights and not giving them up. The right of an individual council member to retain or remove their choice on the advisory boards. The right of advisory board members to speak and debate freely without fear of harassment and payback because the board member did not vote or do what another council member demanded, especially when the board is upholding the rules and policies of the board. The board should be treated with respect as they do the work of the town council without the paycheck. Respected volunteers should not feel endangered, or publicly or privately harassed. Leave the boards as they are, with the council member appointing, removing, or retaining their own choice. We, as a town, did not want a strong mayor, a bully, obviously, given the attitude now, it's a good thing. It is an honorary title, and we were right. Every member of this council has the same one vote and equal standing. What we have seen and heard puts this town in the danger zone. Council members do not allow your individual rights to be taken away. Do not allow volunteer board members to be bullied by somebody on this council for whatever reasons they may have. Vote to retain your individual rights to your appointee. Thank you.
David Kozinski, 6411 Hollaty Trail. I echo Joanne's words for the council members to return, retain your right to preserve your designee to the advisory boards, because each of those individuals were selected based upon your agenda, who you believe is best for that position. I was glancing through this, and it seems to be taking away a lot of discretion of the council members. It ends up becoming a little more, more government control over what an individual council member decides. Pulled up the Resolution 2015-017, and your council, your council members still maintain to change your appointment at any time if you feel that person is not fulfilling their duties. And that's in the responsibility of each individual council member. And now, it's looking at, if somebody's unhappy with what somebody did, I'm gonna get revenge. Looking at the definite, the words, "conduct unbecoming of a board member," there's no definition for this. That can be somebody walking into a advisory board meeting, wearing shorts, and they don't like the way they're dressed. It's a vague and ambiguous term, and it denies procedural and substantive due process, which is guaranteed in the Florida Constitution. Procedural and, procedural and substantive due process. There's no definition for the word. How are you gonna be able to define somebody coming up with conduct unbecoming if you don't even have a definition for the word? I don't think it's a good ordinance. Thanks.
Keep it quiet all night.
Yeah, I know. Anyway, I know when to pick my fights. I don't like this at all. I feel totally responsible to the one that appoints me. I feel totally responsible to the town. I represent the town, I represent the one that appointed me. In my particular case, we have 12 people on our board. Those 12 people, five were appointed by an individual, the rest were all appointed by all five of you. In other words, you agreed that that person, so any one of you basically could remove that individual. I think that when you start telling somebody that they've gotta follow rules that we don't know, and I had talked to Andy about, because I am a chair, and I have been called into Andy's office, because somebody thought on my board that I was rude and disrespectful to my liaison, and that I was very disrespectful to a council member that was there. But it was handled differently, it was handled very well, I was called in to his office. I, I addressed it, I was, I did. And, so, at my next meeting, I told them I would resign, I apologized, I said, "It's a relationship that we have," and I didn't realize that some of the people that were there didn't understand the relationship. And so, I'm more aware of the relationship and how other people are gonna see it. And I know it won't bother Mr. Jablonsky, but he leaned over, and he was bugging me while I was running the meeting, and I said to him, "Shut up." They felt that was really out of order. At any rate, I don't do it anymore, I just kind of very lowly say things to him. But we have a very long history, 17 years, so I thought I could get away with a lot of stuff with him. The same thing was in regard to December. December and I go back to 17 years. And December was talking, and I said, "Can we do this in four sentences or less?" Because she was going on and on. That was disrespectful and rude to her. And so, the point is that I answer to the town, and I answered to the one that appoints me, and I think the one that appoints me, if they don't happen to be at the, at the meetings and don't know what I'm doing, then I would expect whoever is there that's a council member to address it and ask me to leave, go outside and address whatever he thinks. And then if I continue, then it's his responsibility either tell the one that appointed me, "You need to get with the program, you need to talk to her," or "You need to remove her." But I still feel, if you make this thing a vote, you're now making it political. And when you make it political, you're making it non-functional. I'm just gonna tell you, everybody is going to be kissing everybody else, because they're gonna be afraid that they'll be thrown off of this board, and it becomes a, a nothing board, an ineffective board. We fight, we argue, we agree, and when we get through with it, we really run it through the mill, and then we hand it to you. And I think that when it involves outsiders that are there, it would be nice if we could have just a nice pamphlet, would be etiquette, things that we would expect any board member to follow. Respect towards people that are there as guests, or new residents, or people that are there propositioning us for things we don't like. We still have to respect them and be courteous. And we still can get our point across, we just can't be abusive. And we need to get that across. When you come on the board, here's your pamphlet, you know, this is, this is what is expected. But don't take it away from us by saying, "Okay, you gotta please at least three people in order to stay on the board. Otherwise, you alienate three, you're out of there." So, now you're not gonna get anything out of it. The board will be a mess. Thank you.
Here we go. God, George, don't cut your nose off.
Good evening, as current chair of the Comprehensive Planning Board. Yes. I think we've wasted too much time on this, I think we need to bury the hatchet and move forward. I think we all know what this is about, and it's not worthy of a, of a vote, really, I think, the way things are. And I think we've all learned a valuable lesson, without going into detail. Thank you.
I just think advisory boards, they were created so you can, you have volunteers from the system, from the town, and you ha, and the whole point of having councilmen to appoint different residents to those boards is so you have a good group that encompasses the whole town. And I just think it's important that you just leave that responsibility with that, the councilman who makes the appointment. And I don't know if it's already in the paperwork that you fill out when you're on advisory board, I don't remember, that there's some kind of code of conduct, just so that you're aware once, I mean, I think we all should be aware of that. But maybe it should be, if it's not included in there, maybe to have some kind of code of conduct that's included in the paperwork that we all sign to, to participate on advisory board.
So, this motion, just so you know, is, you get to pick whoever you want, it's just for removal of somebody who's out of place?
I, I also think it's important for the board, the advisory board, to, to vote on who they, who they see is the best person to lead that board.
We're not in that either.
No, I understand, but I, but I think it would, should be up to the, the councilman that appoints them to, it's, I think it's just, they've made the appointment, they need to step up. If, if, for whatever reason, that person really needs to go, then they need to step up and say, "You know what, you're, we just can't, we can't have that behavior, or you can't do it this way," and you, and, and they remove that way. But I just don't, I don't think you...
Problem is, we tried that, we tried that, it didn't work.
In, in your opinion? But I just think, I don't agree, I, I, but I don't agree with the motion as it, as it is.
Yeah, okay.
I, I want to...
Public comment's closed, go ahead, back here.
I would like my change in this motion to stand, I think it's good. I think we need to have a little bit of teeth in this. I don't wanna open this up again for us to beat this up again, because it's not necessary. I just think we need to vote on...
I think your modification was good, I mean, it's a compromise for the short period of time, whatever.
I think we all, we should have the opportunity to speak to it.
Oh, absolutely, listen, clearly, absolutely, we're not...
Well, if I, if I can go next. You know, we're trying to fix something that's not broke. That's the way I'm looking at it. And what this, with the way this reads right now, two votes can eliminate somebody off of the town board. Not three, two, it's a simple majority. Dee, if you're out of town and I'm out of town, and they have a town meeting, one, they only need one other person besides them to agree to it. There's no supermajority here, there's no, anything like that. This now becomes a political football.
Say three to two, then, I don't care.
No, what, what the point is, why are we, why do we even need to change it?
We can do that on anything, though, we can, we, we can, if you're out of town and I'm out of town, they get to vote on anything. Where does it stop? You know, you were both sitting there when all this took place, we've already agreed on that, we've already hashed it out.
Yeah, I know, but the, the point I'm trying to make is, is we're trying to fix something that's not broke, and in the process, we're intimidating people? They, we're saying, "We don't want you to volunteer on those boards." Unless, it depends on, it's an election year, and I need your vote, or, you know, this and that's happening? That's what you're saying here, that's the subliminal, the hidden message here, okay? Whether you agree with that or not, that's what, that's what the perception is.
So, let me run by you what, what happens here. Anybody can act any way, any way they want, disruptive, disrespectful, get a slap on the wrist, and get to stay there.
Or bully somebody around, or cuss or swear, or whatever, and it's acceptable.
I'm gonna sit here and blame you, because you said you'd take responsibility.
Give me a chance to talk.
I'm gonna, listen, I haven't shut you down, but the fact of the matter here is, I watched it happen at least three times, and you did absolutely nothing. Go ahead.
I, I wasn't quite finished, but I would much rather see this like some sort of a supermajority, so that it's not so easy. You know, like a 4-1 or something like that. I'm not in favor of it at all, but I can, I can live with a 4-1, because that's really difficult to do, and it, you know, you gotta have four people here to get a yes vote, not two out of town, three showing up, and then one guy just bringing it up, or one lady bringing it up.
I agree with that.
You know, in the middle of whatever, and you just need one other person to agree with you. That's all, you know, that's all you're doing.
I agree with that.
Now, one more vote, that's all you're doing. And it, and it takes the politics out of it, to a degree.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, do I, am I in favor of it at any way, no, not.
I gotta tell you...
I like the process the way it is.
I'm gonna change my attitude, because you guys aren't in support of this. Whoseever appointment it is, I'm just gonna slam him on here, on TV, because nothing's been happening. So, I'm gonna leave it be...
I don't understand what you mean, though, I don't understand what you mean by slam.
You guys don't wanna support this, you guys don't want anything, you don't want an action, or us to have a tool to take an action.
Mayor, you're incorrect.
Okay, explain to me how I'm incorrect. When we voted three to two to remove someone, and the very next meeting, someone got reappointed again, only because the way it is. So, tell me how you're gonna fix that, if you don't do something like this.
Mayor, this is Steve's appointment, I'd like to hear from him.
Yeah, but I just wanna make mention, Mayor, that I just said I would support a 4-1 vote.
I get it.
Okay, I, I just said I would support a 4-1 vote.
I get it.
I will too.
And that's a compromise, but my point, listen...
That means I support it, I support it, based on that condition.
I, I get that.
Okay.
But the vote, the vote wasn't a 4-1, the vote was a three to two the last time it happened, so...
Yeah.
I don't know that it'll ever happen again, but...
Well, go ahead.
All right, I guess I've been slammed. So, all right, so let's, let's go back in time, I think we, unfortunately, we have to rehash this again. So, my, my appointment is Newell Hollingsworth, and he is passionate about this town, and sometimes that gets the best of him. I think we've all seen it, we've seen it here in front of the podium, we've seen it there, in, in the board meetings. But it's always, it's always in the fashion of doing what's best for the town. He had, we had a guest there that was, wanted to develop some property, he was opposed to it, he said some things he shouldn't have said, and, and then he and the mayor got into a loud argument back and forth, and, and so then, at the very next meeting, the mayor put forth a vote to have him removed, it did pass three to two, he was removed. I gave it a lot of thought over the next two weeks, and frankly, there is no one in this town. And I challenge anyone to, to come up with someone better. But he knows the comp plan, and he's better than anybody else in town. He just does. So, unlike what the mayor said, I spoke to Newell a couple of times, we went over, you know, that the way that was handled was not right. I did, I did do what I think was my responsibility, and I spoke to him about it, and we had some good conversations. I believe that, I believe that he will control himself a little better in the future. There's no guarantees, and there's no, and let me tell you, I don't, I don't have an endless fuse either, you know? But given the situation, I want him on the board. I think it's the best thing for the town. He's a guy that is a volunteer, he's volunteering his time, he's volunteering his time away from his family and other things he can do to support our town, to help our town, to help us preserve the rural lifestyle, which is what we're all about. So, I made the judgment call that I wanted him back on there, and, and I reappointed him. And so now, here we are, looking at an ordinance, so that potentially, he could be removed and not reappointed again.
No, no.
Until the end of the year.
That's not true.
I just said, "Till the end of the year." Let me, let me at least finish my sentence before you jump in, okay? And, so, so, this, this is, this, this may be, you know, under the cloak of what's best And so, so, this is, this may be, you know, under the cloak of what's best for the town, but this is, this is a personal thing. And I find it very hard to think that we should be passing resolutions in our town based on one simple, specific event for one specific individual that's then going to be applied to everyone, because three council members feel like that's the right thing to do. We should vote no on this. We should vote no. And the reason we should vote no is because we want a diversity of opinions on the boards. We want to have people, we don't want a rubber stamp on the boards. We want individuals that will speak their mind and know that there's not going to be any consequences or any, any payback that's going to happen if they speak their mind, if they disagree with me, if they disagree with somebody else that's on this council. We want a board that's free to speak their mind, whether they think it's going to be in agreement with the council members that attend there or not. This is a bad ordinance. This should not be happening, or a bad resolution, it should not be happening, and I would strongly hope that this council would vote no.
Very well spoken.
Thank you, sir.
You going in? I got to tell you, you may have spoken to him, but at the meetings I attended, that he was abusive at, to the guests, you didn't say anything to him. So, the fact that you did after the fact, or whatever, and obviously, apparently, continued, because I don't know if you did it after Bergeron's beradment, but that was pretty bad. You're sitting there.
I was there.
I mean, so, I was extremely embarrassed, I wanted to crawl under a rock, but...
We're all in agreement with that, Mayor.
Well, I understand that you're in agreement with that, but...
We're in agreement with that. It's not an argument, you know?
So...
I think we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater here. You know, you're taking it personal, and I really don't think that's in the healthiest interest of the town right now.
The man that was there at the meeting when I was there, unfortunately, I hate to have to tell you this, but he took it personal. He did.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
He took it personal.
Yeah, I understand.
The man that was sitting there.
Yeah, I know.
He never got an apology. Did you call him, Steve? Did you call Mr. Duke?
No, I did not call Mr. Duke.
Why would you not? Because you're in charge. You're in charge.
It's your appointment.
He was your appointment. Forget Mr. Hollingsworth, he's a volunteer, he gives his time, whatever. You're paid. You should have called him then, and you should have apologized. I don't think any one of us sit up here, and I don't think anybody out there that has a job or does anything, that doesn't have consequences. Nobody. There's always consequences for something. Nobody wants any more rules. I didn't create this rule. This is a rule that's going to be coming into a place because there was a bad action that took place, that probably could have been stopped, like I told you a long time ago. If a phone had been picked up, I'm sorry, you know, it just, it's a guy thing, whatever, it could have been done. But it didn't, and now it come before us, and we did vote on it, and it wasn't like it was a bad vote, it was, it was a good vote. So, if you want to be responsible, then it's up to you. It's your job to do it. If it had happened on my watch for somebody that I appointed, I would have felt obligated to call that person, but I would have talked to the person and said, "Listen, all you've got to do is pick up the phone and call him. No big deal. Sorry, you know, I got a little, I got a little carried away, I'm passionate." Whatever. It would have been done, but it didn't. So, I don't want to beat this up anymore. I've stressed over it long enough. If you don't want any actions for anybody, then let's just get rid of this. Why have something on the books that doesn't need to be there?
Call the question.
Can we reread the motion?
So, I got to be frank, I don't even know what the motion is anymore.
I don't either.
I spoke to Andy, there was, there was a lot going on with amendments to motions that sounded like an amendment, but wasn't a motion to amend. So, the original, the way that I understand the original, well, the second or third motion, was that the council could remove an individual by a majority vote.
Four to one is what he said.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that wasn't, was that, that wasn't a motion. The motion that was on the table, and this is where I was going, was a motion to amend the resolution to enable a appointed board member to be removed by a majority vote of the commission until the end of that term. I then heard Councilmember Jablonsky say that he potentially could support it at a 4-1 vote, to which Councilmember Schroeder agreed. The problem with it is that there wasn't a motion made on that.
No, there wasn't, yeah.
Okay, is that, was that a motion or not a motion? That's why I couldn't...
I don't know. Do you make your motion, modifying your motion?
I'll modify mine to make the motion that it takes a four to one.
I'll second.
All right, so, four to one. So, Russell's clarifying, it's actually a four to one, not a supermajority, it's a four to one.
Exactly.
So, the item that's now before the council to be voted on is that the council can remove a board member from the board for the remainder of that term with a four to one vote of the commission.
Correct.
Yes.
Any questions? Everyone understand the motion?
Yep. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
No.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
No.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, accepted. Thank you.